Good morning, Aloha Kakahia Kaka'ko. Welcome everybody to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Mr. Diaz, roll call please.
Thank you Chair, good morning Commissioners. Let's start off with Commissioner Ke'aloa.
Good morning, I am at home in Pa'ia. My daughter is here, my family is here watching her and they probably won't come in but they might be in and out a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner DeKos.
Yes, good morning Commissioners and staff. I am in my home office in Napili by myself, my wife may be coming in once in a while throughout the day.
Thank you Commissioner Hippolito.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, fellow Commissioners. Aloha, I'm in my office in Kahului, alo.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Aloha mai kaka', nice to see you folks today.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aloha and good morning all.
Chair there.
Yes, I'm here, present.
And last but not least, our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Ward.
Hello, I'm here, it's a honor to be here and look forward to working with everybody.
Yes, thank you. So for everybody who may not be listening too closely at home, we have a new seventh Commissioner, yay! Thank you very much, hopefully we have two more Commissioners on the way. This is a wonderful way to serve your community, I recommend. I recommend people throwing their hat in to join this body. If you feel strongly about the future of this island, this is a great way to put your thoughts and passion and ideas and care into action. So hope to see two more people soon. Now, we have a public hearing item on the agenda. Mr. Diaz, please read us into the record.
Thank you Chair, first public hearing item is Mr. Rory Frampton on behalf of MyFish LLC requesting a special management area use permit for the development of a 1,073 square foot building with 18 parking stalls, two loading zones, landscaping improvements, etc. And this project is located in the Maui Business Park Phase 2 at 218 La'ou Loop, Kahului. And the staff planner for this project is Colette Cordozza.
Thank you, so just for everybody's awareness, we will have presentation from staff, presentation from the applicant, then public testimony, and then we'll go into Commission questions.
Morning Commissioners, this item is under review today because the proposed thank you. The proposed scope of work will take place at the Maui Business Park Phase 2. Therefore located within the special management area requiring a review of the project under Hawaii Revised Statutes 205. The Maui Planning Commission rules call for the Maui Planning Commission to review special management area major permits. Special management area major permits are projects that the department has deemed to be a development and are valued at over $500,000. As previously stated, the proposed project is located at 218 La'ou Place within the Maui Business Park Phase 2 North Project area, which is developed with 32 light industrial lots. The Business Park subdivision was granted a special management area use permit by the Maui Planning Commission in April of 2011. The property owner, applicant, MyFish LLC is the locally owned parent company of Pa'ia Fish Market Restaurants. MyFish LLC is proposing the construction of a warehouse building, storage facility, commercial kitchen, and additional spaces for other businesses. The proposed scope of work will take place on a vacant undeveloped lot within the Maui Business Park Phase 2 North Project. The project will be explained in further detail by the consultant, Mr. Rory Frampton, on behalf of the applicant, MyFish LLC.
Thank you Colette, and good morning Chairman and members of the Commission, and welcome on board, Mr. or Commissioner Ward. Yep, I will try to share my screen here to do my presentation. Okay. So as Colette mentioned, this is the MyFish LLC project in their warehouse in Kahului near Costco and the Airport Access Highway. MyFish is the parent company for Pa'ia Fish Market. Moonstar Green, who's with us today, she's the M in MyFish and the Y is Yuri Salidad, and he's in, happens to be in Bali right now. But they're the two owners, Moonstar's been involved since, for 30 years she's been the owner. The store opened in 1989. They also have two other Maui restaurants, Pa'ia and Kihei, they had a third, which was unfortunately in Lahaina. And they also have two on Oahu. So the warehouse is going to be a consolidated storage facility for their Maui restaurants, and there will be some additional space for other businesses. As Colette mentioned again, it's in the Maui Business Park Phase 2 North Project, and it's a 32 lot subdivision, but only about 22 of those lots happen to be in the SMA. I think you've seen at least seven of them now. This is my fifth in front of the Commission, so all the individual lots have to come in and get an SMA. The Maui Business Park Phase 2 went through the State Land Use Commission to get district boundary amendments, and it went through zoning, all those entitlements, and through that process, they had a lot of mitigation measures, they did a lot of improvements along Hana Highway, they did major drainage system improvements. And for this project itself, they did mass grading, they put in the roadways, infrastructure, and utilities, and the drainage, so basically just coming in and building out the property as envisioned by the original project. The summary of the improvements, again, it's a 10,000 square foot warehouse building with about 8,800 square feet on the first floor with the loft, second floor office for the MyFish Company. Along, there are going to be two commercial kitchens. The site improvements include 18 parking stalls, nine feet wide parking stalls. The landscape will consist mostly of native, of all entirely of native plants. And planting, there'll be underground detention system. Oh, I would like to add that the project architect is here today too, Marty Cooper, and online Jacob Freeman from CDF Engineering is the engineer. And again, the infrastructure is just connecting to existing utility stubouts. There's a dual water system, they have potable and non-potable water for irrigation and all the other standard utilities. The location is in Kahului. I'll put my cursor up there where the white arrow is, if I can find it, there it is. There's a more close-up shot, it's one of the lots on between Costco and the Airport Access Highway, in that outlined in red on the screen up there. It's a vacant lot, it's called Lot Number 12, just ready to build. It's a standard footprint and site plan with the 18 stalls, rubbish bins, loading zones, and all the standard features that you'd have on a building of this type. This is the floor plan, there's actually five bays. MyFish will be a part of three of those, and there'll be two others for other users. One of them is going to be a bakery, that's the unit with the second commercial kitchen, they've already got a tenant there, and then the third one, they'll be looking for someone. The building will be solar, so they'll have solar to basically top off their use, or to, they're going to try to max out their solar production with their usage. And they'll be further designing that as they figure out what their final tenant looks like. And here's the slide showing the four elevations. And a cross-section, it's a standard prefab metal structure with the internal rigid frame. And there's some perspectives from the street view, and the driveway view, and the front view. There is, as I mentioned, there will be a subsurface drainage detention facility consisting of 21 NDS storm chambers, and that will allow for retention and actually percolation into the ground. There's a planting plan with basically all native plants. The project is not in the, or it's outside of the sea level rise exposure area, it's the elevation's about 30 feet above sea level. It is in the state urban district. And the community plan has designated it light industrial. And the zoning, of course, is light industrial as well. And I'd just like to put up this excerpt from the community plan. This was put in the plan when they actually put this area into light industrial designation, and it was, one of the policies for Kihei, for Kahului was to provide industrial growth opportunities through expansion of existing industrial centers associated with the airport and the harbor, and in Wa'uluku and Kahului, and encourage the fee simple ownership of lots provided by private developers. So they wanted to, they wanted to provide an opportunity for fee simple ownership for local companies. Historically Kahului had a lot of leasehold land, and there wasn't a lot of fee simple land available, and this airport industrial park really provided a lot of that, those opportunities. So as a summary, the rationale and support of the project, that it's consistent with the land use designations and planning designations, it's consistent with the intent and envisioned uses of the Maui Business Park. Infrastructure and utilities are already completed. It's consistent with the SMA objectives, policies, and decision-making criteria, and it supports the intent of the Wa'uluku Kahului Community Plan by providing a local business with the opportunity for fee simple ownership of land and building. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody signed up to testify? Not for this item, okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hippolito.
Thank you Chair, Mr. Frampton, you mentioned that this facility would be a storage facility, but could you explain that commercial kitchen, you have two of them. Is this going to be a functional, a certified kitchen?
Yes, the, one of the kitchens will be used by MyFish. They make their own sauces, they make their magic sauce. And I think there's a few other items, you guys, they make stuff and bottle it and use it for the restaurant, so they'll have a commercial certified kitchen. And then next door, it'll be a bakery, Mamona Bakery will have their own certified kitchen as well. And there'll be, of course, there'll be grease traps associated with those kitchens as well.
Thank you Chair.
Sure. Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Ke'aloa.
Um, I just have a question about the height, 27 feet, I'm just trying to like imagine how that compares to any nearby structures like Costco or the gas station, is that?
The, there's, sorry, I'm sorry Commissioner. There are other buildings in the nearby vicinity that are about the same height, they've been constructed, and they're in the, I believe they were 25. The one that's being built right down near Costco is, I think it's about 30. So it's similar in size to the other industrial buildings that are being built in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Probably a little less than Costco.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner DeKos.
Thank you Chair, thank you Mr. Frampton. A big surprise, I've got water questions for you. So you mentioned the, there is some drainage storage, I was looking at the drainage improvements. My concern, as always, you know, you guys are 1,000 feet from the wildlife sanctuary, the Kahana Pond, so any additional runoff, you've probably got 80% impervious surface covered there. A lot of trucks, everything coming in, so all that runoff is going to go off the property. Now you did, it seems like you managed to contain 56% on-site with the storage, underground storage, and those have filtration or infiltration, and we're wondering about the other 44%. That's using the 50-year storm numbers.
That will flow into the A and B's constructed drainage system. And when they did that, they actually sized it to reduce the overall impact of the entire development. So technically, this project doesn't require that subsurface retention because it was already taken care of as part of the A and B project, so this is redundancy, if you will, and extra precaution because it is in the SMA and in a sensitive area. So that's, that's why, of course, the applicant's doing it. But yes, the remaining amounts will flow through the A and B constructed system.
Okay, and that is a stormwater drain going to the ocean.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah. So, and I understand, and that's usually the response, is this is above and beyond, this is, you know, not required by code, that kind of stuff. From an impact, water quality, coastal resource, environmental ecosystem impact, of course, all of these, you know, you've been in front of us five times, I've probably asked you the same questions most of the times. Is the cumulative impacts of the water quality that is ending up in the ocean? So controlling 100% would certainly at least eliminate your, this project's impact. So there was just no way to control, to infiltrate. And there's a difference between controlling stormwater that's sent to the ocean versus putting it back in the aquifer. And you guys are infiltrating a large part, which I appreciate. But I'm trying to count for the cumulative, so the other 44% and the cumulative of all the other projects that are going up in this area.
Yeah, so the idea is to more than offset the impacts of this project, so they're doing what they can to result in less water coming off the property and taking care of all their water, and allowing for infiltration. And, and the cumulative impacts were largely taken care of by the A and B system. And if you drive along the, the road towards the big box stores, you know, like towards Target, you see those huge drainage basins that have cows in them. Those are large facilities that were oversized as well to, to take care of the quality of runoff water. And for this project, you know, we have the infiltration going on, and then the, which will allow for sedimentation. And we also will, the project architect will, has designed or is going to incorporate the oil-water separators to filter the water coming off the parking lot so that the water leaving the parking lot at least gets treated as well.
Okay. Or at least 56% of it. On a heavy ring. As far as freshwater, so to the other issue with water, it's not just, you know, the sediment runoff, it's the draining aquifer, and then not recharging aquifer, so. I noticed, I don't think you mentioned, but I noticed you are irrigating with R1, which is great. But all the other potable, any idea what, I didn't see the potable water use by this facility. Any idea how many gallons per day?
I don't have those numbers handy, it's not going to be a lot. The potable, the potable system is a private system that was developed by A and B properties. It's not connected to the county system. But they'll have all the low-flow fixtures for the restrooms, there's not a lot of, each bay, each bay will have a restroom, but typically these types of industrial uses don't have a lot of water use.
Okay, so you don't, you don't know, and even though it's a private system, it's, it's still draining the aquifer. So I'm just accounting for the offsetting of that impact as well. So we don't know how much.
Well, I'm guessing it would be somewhere around 1,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
That's a guesstimate.
Okay, you mentioned the solar panels, and there's, you're hitting the right marks. But it'd be nice to see a comprehensive, approximate, I mean, there's going to be a lot of cold storage, I assume, here. So it's going to be pretty energy-intensive. Any idea if you're going to hit 25% offset with solar, 50, 10%, any idea at all?
Yes, I think I mentioned their, their goal is to get 100% solar energy, so they want to try to meet their demand. They might do it in phases, typically that's what'll happen, is you'll build out, let's say 80% of it, and then figure out what your usage settles in at, and then add the rest of the panels to make it up to 100%. But they're committed to go, to get as close to 100% as possible.
So somebody has done the calculations of estimating what the use might look like, and how much surface area you're going to need to offset that with solar panels?
It's just been a very rough calculation, but yes.
And it looks like there's plenty of roof space to accommodate the offset.
At this point, yes.
Okay. That's all I got, thank, for now, thank you Chair, thank you.
Yep, thank you, any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner, or Vice Chair Thompson?
Thank you, it's just a comment, thank you for nine-foot spots, nine and a half.
You're welcome.
Close our buttons.
Any other questions from the Commission? Okay, I also want to thank you for being proactive and using native plants, that's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Yes. I, I can't help myself, but I want to make a note for future, there was one of the Florifada studies for one of the parcels, I can't remember exactly which one, but it talked about having Ma'o in the area because the name being Kamau Ma'o. But if any future ones come up to incorporate Ma'o in the landscaping plans, and that is like exactly what was there before.
So noted.
Yeah, thank you. I think now, if there's no further questions from the Commission, we can hear the recommendation from the department.
Okay, since the public hearing notice was mailed out to everyone within 500 feet, the Planning Department has received no letters of protest from surrounding owners or registered lessees. The application meets the criteria for a SMA use permit. The department is recommending approval based on the six conditions as listed in the staff report and recommendation. In consideration of the foregoing, the Planning Department recommends that the Maui Planning Commission adopt the Planning Department's report and recommendation prepared for the October 8th, 2024 meeting as its findings affect conclusion of law and decision and order, and to authorize the Director of Planning to transmit said written decision and order on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, we can discuss or entertain a motion. Commissioner Ke'aloa.
Do I motion first, or can I suggest a condition?
You can make a motion and incorporate a condition as part of that.
Okay, so, shucks, I never do motions. I would like to make a motion, would it be a motion to approve with the recommendation of the Planning Department with the addition of a condition?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, and the condition be, I guess, including 100% solar offset for electricity by, I don't know, whatever kind of time period they need to get a comprehensive understanding of their electricity needs, their like a couple years after construction, or?
I think staff can help us craft some language.
Yeah, so that the applicant reach 100% solar energy and then by a specified date? That correct, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
And what is that specific?
I'm open to that date, I don't know how long it would take to understand the needs for electricity.
Commissioner Ke'aloa, would two years be appropriate?
I think so, how does the applicant feel about that?
They motion number two, so they're okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so the condition will read that the applicant reach 100% solar energy within two years.
Colette, certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Like by, by, sorry.
Within two years of receiving their certificate of occupancy, does that work with the applicant?
Commissioner Ke'aloa, does that work for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Second from Vice Chair Thompson, Commissioner Ke'aloa, would you like to speak to your motion?
I guess, I feel like the applicant's done a great job of, you know, doing their best in trying to mitigate impacts to the environment. I grew up eating Pa'ia Fish Market, it's like one of my favorite restaurants, so I am just very supportive of local businesses building their companies, you know, and yeah, just super appreciative of Pa'ia Fish Market, and that's why I am making a motion to recommend the SMA.
Thank you, any discussion from the second?
Incurred.
Okay, any further discussion from the Commission? Oh, Commissioner Hippolito.
Thank you Chair, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Frampton coming prepared. He said it's his fifth time, I think we dragged him through the cold sometimes, but I appreciate him coming prepared, knowing what us as the Commissioners want in this, in this development, so. That's it Chair, thank you.
Sure, thank you, any other Commissioners? Oh, yes, Mr. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to thank Rory Frampton for being prepared, but just so the Commission understands, most of what he's outlined and you guys have said are kind of your table stakes, there's what was actually built into the South Maui Community Plan, so it very much echoes and reflects the same type of positioning.
Thank you. Yes, and I also want to echo, thank you for being proactive in this and being, you know, good stewards of this area, even though it is industrial and it's been developed and, you know, the land's been heavily used over time, you're still doing what's right, I think, within the SMA area, so thank you. Commissioner DeKos.
Thank you Chair. Are we allowed now to do add another?
Yes, would you like to propose an amendment?
Yes, so I very much appreciate the, the solar offset for sure. I mean, that demonstrates that they are serious. It's hard sometimes, I'm not sure how that gets reinforced, but it's, it's one thing to add something on that's just a token. Uh, the water is obviously very, um, important for me, uh, both as a recharge and as a stormwater control. I know they're going above and beyond the code. We know that code is, has been insufficient, hence our water quality issues. I guess the condition would be, would they, I just did some basic calculation, you know, with a 150 foot bioswale, you could capture the rest of that, um, stormwater. You know, that's a two by three foot basically speed bump. I know most of that property is covered in concrete and the building itself, there is some landscaping on the edges. Would they consider possibly making that a bioswale to capture maybe just along the length of the property, which I think is about 300 feet? If I'm not mistaken. So essentially where your vegetation is, you basically have a bioswale that would cap, that could, you, you might have to redirect the water off the roof over to the top side of that property, the high end of the property, but that would help absorb and infiltrate the, the remaining stormwater.
They're conferring right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and apologies, I was just taking a look at the plans, but there are some areas, um, on each side of the property that are landscaped areas that we can use to, um, create bioswells. The parking strip along the, uh, south boundary, actually, the drainage actually runs the other way. So I don't know how, it's not like the drainage is going to run into that swell since the drainage runs, it's going to be running towards the, the middle of the parking lot. But on either end of the, um, building, you can see the landscaped uh, features that we can create little depressions where they can, the water can settle in through those depressions.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, I think you have a 10,000 square foot building. So there's a ceiling and a roof if you have gutters on there. And then redirect that gutter capture to the high end of the property? And maybe, I don't have the landscape, but isn't there, uh, on the, I guess it would be the south end of the property? Is that the high end?
Yes, and, um, we can't, we can have the downspouts be directed to the vegetated areas.
Okay.
So would you? Purple, are you trying to propose that as a condition? The downspouts to be directed to the landscaped areas?
Yeah, I'm just thinking how to word it differently from a bio, you don't, would you, is it okay to use bioswale? Would you rather use a different term so it aligns better with the existing?
I would rather direct it to the landscaped areas.
Okay, so the roof water catchment will be redirected to the landscaped area?
Yes.
Good. I'd be, I'd be fine with that. Yeah.
Okay, so you, you want to make a motion for a friendly amendment to add that as a condition?
Yes, please.
Uh, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Lindsay? Do I, if you want to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, I mean, I, I think if properties can at least mitigate their impact, then we can at least stop the decline. So just doing a portion of the stormwater, which is required, is not necessarily improving the situation. If you can do more than what you're capturing, you know, we can start, uh, going in the right direction. So I appreciate just, just maybe, just not making the situation worse. And that may set a good example for these neighboring properties. So I appreciate their effort to do that.
Commissioner Lindsay?
No comment, Chair.
Okay. Um, I think let us vote on this, uh, friendly amendment. You call for the vote. This is just for this added condition from Commissioner DeCos.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Speak into the mic.
Aye. Commissioner Kailaha?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCos?
Aye.
Commissioner Hippolito?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Chair there.
Aye.
Okay, any other conditions to add or can we call for the main vote? Okay, seeing no further amendments, Mr. Diaz, the main vote, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So main vote to approve the project, um, subject to two new added conditions. Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Kailaha?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCos?
Aye.
Commissioner Hippolito?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
I'm chair there.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Um, that might be almost record time on a SM1. Good job, team! Very nice. Do we even need a break yet or shall we press on? Okay, let us press on. Uh, Mr. Diaz, uh, item D1.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Item D1 is, uh, the Hana Advisory Committee Recommendation to the Maui Planning Commission to recommend approval of the request for Munakia Hiraga on behalf of the State Department of Land and Natural Resources, requesting a special management area use permit for the proposed addition of a comfort station and related uses at the, uh, Wayanapa-Napa State Park near Honokalani Road in Hana. Uh, this item came before the Commission on, uh, twice, um, on, uh, August 13th and then on August 27th. Uh, if I recall correctly, at the August 27th meeting, the Commission requested more information. Um, I believe it was six items, um, that, uh, you folks wanted more information on, um, and also wanted to open this meeting up for further testimony. So, so with that, I'll hand it over to the planner on this, which is, uh, Colette Cortosa. Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, thanks, Danny. Um, I can go over the five items that were requested just to refresh everyone's mind, if you don't mind. Um, and, uh, that, yes, that was the correct recap, um, that Danny had just explained, but here, here were the items. Review the Hyanna State Park Comfort Station toileting system, um, potential innovation solution as there is sand substrate and believed burials there within the area. Number two was to evaluate two dry toilet systems as solutions for comfort stations, one being the Clibus Mutrum M54 and one, another being Phoenix 201. And within this, uh, the applicant was to include cost of these units comparison compared to the standard, um, septic and leach field. Also include maintenance on a septic system versus the maintenance that would be required on the two suggested systems. Um, item three was to explore, um, as an alternative to the existing septic and leach field system, the insertion of a bioreactor, preferably a ridge to reef bioreactor, a nature-based system. Uh, number four was regarding the cutting of trees and foliage, uh, a cutting, uh, sorry, consulting with engineering and DSP was to work with the DOFA folks to discuss and create a plan regarding the trees within the area, discuss whether they're native or invasive. Um, discuss cutting back, uh, the foliage so that the root system doesn't infiltrate with the leach field. Within that, uh, discuss the potential for the growth of the trees that will consume the leachate, which is the end result that's coming out of the leach field, um, as well as how much of the leachate will be consumed by those trees as nutrients, especially if they're needing native trees. Um, and then number five was that the Commission wanted more input and feedback from the Hana community, mainly Mr. Perry. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to, um, Gwendolyn Rivera on, uh, from Munakio Hiraga on behalf of our applicant, um, DSP.
Thanks, Colette. So good morning, Commissioners and staff. Welcome, Mr. Ward. Uh, my name is Gwendolyn Rivera. Thank you very much for your review of this SMA use permit application for improvements at Wayanapa-Napa State Park, um, which include a new comfort station and resurfacing of Honokalani Road. The project team for DLNR State Parks is here via Webex. Um, Alan Carpenter, Martha Yent, and Larry Pacheco from State Parks are here to address the questions that were, um, put forth at the last meeting. We also have the Civil Engineer Kirk Tanaka from RT Tanaka Engineers and Valerie Suzuki, uh, the Project Manager from DLNR. So as Colette mentioned, um, the outstanding questions involved, um, which were brought up at the last meeting included, um, clarification regarding the feedback received from the community about the comfort station location, which Martha Yent will be able to speak to. Uh, there were questions about the impacts to native trees and Larry Pacheco will respond to that. And then, of course, additional consideration regarding implementation of alternative waste treatment technologies for the comfort station. Um, Alan Carpenter from, uh, State Parks will be able to provide an overview of the various alternative technologies and the questions that were raised, um, as well as an assessment of which of those technologies might be applicable and feasible in the context of the current project. Um, I do want to mention that the Division of State Parks would like to implement an additional treatment step to achieve a higher standard of treatment before the affluent goes to the leach field. Um, so we will have a, a proposed approval condition for you to consider, um, for State Parks to implement one of these pre-treatment steps for the comfort station. Um, and this would be contingent upon securing funding and getting Department of Health approval. Um, and we can propose some language for your consideration at that point as part of Alan's presentation. Okay, so we do have some slides prepared to address the questions, um, raised by the Commission. So we could just run through them, um, each one, starting with the native trees and ending up at wastewater, if that's okay with the Commission? Okay, thank you, Chair. Okay.
Oh, once again, I just want to note for everybody online, we'll take testimony after your presentation is done.
Thank you. Okay, the first question relates to, uh, accommodation of native trees in the project area. And I'll ask Larry Pacheco to unmute and provide a response on this topic. Larry?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for your review. Um, I did, uh, follow up regarding the vegetation in the area that we had discussed at our previous meeting. And, um, I spoke with our District Forester Lance De Silva, as well as, um, a former, um, crew leader from the Forestry Division, uh, Mike Kahula. And they confirmed that it was, uh, the area is surrounded with false kamani, and they're non-native. Um, that area would be cleared, um, also to, you know, prevent the roots from the false kamani and other vegetation from, you know, um, getting into the septic system. So, um, yeah, that was a confirmation that I received from, from, uh, like I said, our, our district forester and our forester work, former forester worker.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Um, Chair, shall we proceed with each, uh, each topic or did you want to do questions as we, as we go?
Um, I think we'll do questions after testimony. So Commissioners, write down any questions that you'll have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next Martha Yent can address the outreach process and feedback received from the community with respect to the comfort station. Um, Martha, if you're on, could you please unmute and, um, and address this topic?
Aloha, Commissioners and planning staff. Um, Martha Yent with the Division of State Parks. And just as a, a quick overview, the plans for a comfort station in this location initiated with the 2007 master plan for the park. The more serious discussion of the location began in 2018 and we conducted several meetings with the community to consider different options within the general area. Gwen, could you show the next slide, please? And just as a quick reminder, um, after the consultation with the community, we determined that, um, location number three was the preferred location. We did end up moving it closer to the park roadway, which provided a distance of about 112 feet from Cemetery C to the comfort station. And the distance from Cemetery C to the leach field was about 117 feet. We did consider additional movement of the comfort station after our meeting with the community on, uh, August 20th this year. And, uh, next slide, please, Gwen. So this show was some of the, the constraints that we were considering when we talked about any movement. Uh, one of the big factors is the topography. And moving the comfort station, um, to the southeast or towards Hana would, um, affect the topography of the slope so that we would be sloping down towards the drainage gully. Um, therefore, there would have to be, uh, some redesign at the comfort station to add fill material to raise the comfort station to the level of the existing parking lot. We were also concerned that by moving the comfort station further, we would have to enlarge the parking lot, which would extend, um, to meet the 88 parking stalls. Um, the other consideration were the archaeology sites, which I've tried to show in red. So Site 5385 is, um, a significant site that we really wanted to avoid. Uh, Site 5388 consists of walls that have been interpreted as a habitation, uh, gardening area. I also wanted to show the new entry road because this is going to be a big factor, I think, in, in our planning as we go forward. So, um, I hope this shows that, you know, the movement of the comfort station is really not going to be feasible and would only add about 40 feet to the distance from Cemetery C. I think I will end there, uh.
Okay, thanks a lot, Martha.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next several slides relate to wastewater treatment. Um, so that includes dry toilets, the constructed wetland system at Hyanna State Park, and some other technologies such as bioreactor units for affluent pretreatment. Um, Alan Carpenter from State Parks will be addressing these topics. So at this time, I will turn it over to Alan.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Um, good to be with you again. Um, hoping, hoping the third time's the charm. And, uh, I, I, as Gwen alluded to early on, I, I believe we have a condition that will satisfy, um, the Commissioners' concerns and we'll get to that at the end. But I, I do want to go over the questions as asked and, um, there with me, I'm going to try to be concise, but I also want to be thorough, um, to respect all the, the questions that have come to us. So at State Parks, we have, um, we've had composting units deployed throughout the park system for, I think approaching 40 years. Um, I've been with State Parks for 33 years. Um, I'm, I'm not a sewer engineer, but I have a, a lot of experience working with these, using them, being there at their installation, et cetera. And so the, the ones that we have, we have, I would say we have backcountry units and we have frontcountry units. The backcountry units are, um, within Napolico State Wilderness Park. We have three composting units in Hana Kapi'a, which is a heavy day use area. We have one in Hana Ko'a, which is a midpoint along the, the Kalalau Trail. And we have three at Kalalau, which is a, a renowned overnight backpacking destination. Um, we also have frontcountry ones at Manuka State Wayside on the Big Island and also Mackenzie State Park in Puna. And the, the overarching issue I want to, to convey to you folks is that we have And the overarching issue I want to convey to you folks is that we have never, well, not never, I think, in the distant past, when we had low usage, occasionally, we would actually use these as functioning composting toilets as they were intended, particularly on Napoli. We also were able to dispose on-site at that time, which is no longer allowable by the Department of Health. In recent years, and I would say for probably the better part of the last two decades, use has increased, and the units have never functioned according to the manufacturer's promises or specs. They effectively have become glorified vaults, or, you know, they're essentially port potties in the backcountry. And we, whether these are frontcountry units or backcountry units, our staff has always had to, they have to empty non-composted human waste into barrels and fly it out in the case of the backcountry units. Or, we have to empty them and haul them to a waste facility in the examples of the frontcountry units. The, you guys have probably heard about the recent norovirus outbreak at Kalalau. It would be closed down in Napoli for about a month. I will not blame that outbreak on the composting units. But as a result of that, we had discussions with Department of Health, and the composters were in fact contributing, because without water to wash hands, it was, the composters were probably a place where the norovirus was spread. So, that's another health issue associated with non-water units. And I believe we hauled out during that period, post-norovirus, 18 50-gallon barrels of non-composted human waste from the collective composting units in that park. Not a fun job. So, there's high costs and there's impacts associated with disposal. Again, our staff has to manually empty them. We have to fly them by helicopter from the backcountry areas. You cannot dispose of the waste on-site due to cultural and environmental concerns. So, we compost them off-site and then dispose of them. And the other thing that I think is pertinent to this particular case, and its proximity to cultural sites, when these units do not perform as they are supposed to, there is a vile stench, and they reek. And that is something that would then, that would pervade the area. It also discourages use. So, those are just some of the practical issues. And then, Commissioner Decos, I apologize that I did, I reached out to the contact you gave me for the Phoenix Systems multiple times, including as recently as last week, but he never got back to me. So, I can't really speak to his system, or I never had any in-depth conversation about how that might help us. So, my comments are based on the systems that we know and use. Next slide, please. So, a couple of examples. At Kaulanamanu, which is also on Hoi Island, this is not a state park facility, but it's a forest and wildlife facility. So, here are some comparative costs, right? So, it's, you know, roughly a million bucks to put this thing in, four composting units designed for 100 uses per day. So, if you extrapolate, when we have 300 uses proposed for the capacity at Huayanapanapa, you can see that the cost will escalate. And again, DOFA is currently pumping the waste, non-composted waste, out of these units and disposing it at an approved waste site. And this is for a low-capacity unit. Next slide, please. And so, this is the unit. So, you can see that to service these larger units, it does require a significant elevation change, because the tanks are below. And for things like ADA concerns, et cetera, you have to have the upper level accessible from one plane and the lower level, where the composting units sit, accessible from another one. In these frontcountry units, we've constructed access service roads to get to the bottom units for the servicing. Next slide. So, this is another example. So, Mackenzie. It was definitely cheaper for us to build this one, but it was designed for 50 uses per day. So, roughly half a million, but that's $2,010. And, again, we are removing the waste from this and hauling it to an off-site location for treatment. It's not composting. We can't spread the material within the park or approved facility. Next, just the photos of it. Again, emphasizing the need for the elevation changes from the area that the public accesses to use the toilets versus where you service from. It's pretty significant in terms of the size of the tank, because you have to be able to access the bottom of the tank to both service and remove the effluent. And I should also note, both of these units, these frontcountry units, do require electrical inputs as well. So, power is required. In this case, they're both solar. Next slide, please. So, everyone is interested in Huayna, both for its, you know, its new paradigm of community management, but also some of its innovative wastewater treatment attempts. And the, we do have our only constructed wetland treatment system at Huayna. And this was done in direct response to community and lineal descendant concerns about burials and other cultural features in the area of the restroom and septic system. And so, we took a standard septic and leach field, and we constructed a wetland system, which is, was intended to provide a higher degree of treatment in a culturally sensitive area. And we did, this does involve the use of native plants. So, it's a system that is, at minimum, double the size of a standard septic and leach system, because it has a large containment pond, which is implanted with native plants and varying sizes of from vines to gravels to let the water flow through. So, the water flow is generally subsurface. The plants remove, naturally remove much of the effluent. And it has performed fairly well, but has not met the full capacity of that restroom. And I will say that it, there's no smell whatsoever. So, there is that benefit. The biggest issue with it, next slide, please. These are the plans that show it. It's got two septic tanks in line. The large rectangle there with the shaded outline is, that is the containment pond that contains the plants. And next to it is a leach field. And so, that doubles, basically doubles the size of impacts in terms of construction. And then, there's also a backup system associated with this one, which is not a requirement, but there's a second leach field over there to the left. And because of the, the volume is not quite being met by this treatment system, we have to switch weekly. As the water level rises within the intended wetland, we switch to a standard septic and leach system bypassing the wetland on alternate weeks. That's just to meet capacity, so the system doesn't overflow. Other problems we've had, because of the water table here, occasionally, the water table will reach the base level of the existing leach field, which causes intermixing. And very heavy rainfall periods have occasionally overtopped the containment pond. And so, some effluent untreated has been introduced into the environment just due to storm conditions, very, very heavy rain. Rare, but it does happen. Our biggest concern about deploying this one at Huayanapanapa is the overall disturbance to the landscape, which would require a fairly significant redesign of the septic system. But the other problems are also pertinent. So, next slide, please. Here's some photos of the, well, here's a... All right, next slide? Yeah. This is a diagram showing how it works, right? It is a really innovative system, and it does treat the water to a very high degree. And like I said, it does not, it's, the only intrusion is the extra space taken for the construction of the pond adjacent to the leach field. But also, it does have to be fenced. And so, the fencing is just a slight visual impact in the area. Next slide. But just more detailed photos of the wetland system, which, again, has been a mixed bag. And, you know, it's certainly one option to provide additional treatment. And, but, but the punchline is, for it to work properly, it does require the two leach fields at present. It does have a fence. It does occasionally clog. And again, it can overtop the wetland area in heavy rainfall. And then, there's, you know, routine maintenance, not terrible, but you do require a certified wastewater operator to maintain parts of the wetland. And so, the one added point, I think, is really critical here. We have worked continually for 25 years with the community, including lineal descendants, the Hui Makai Na O Makana originally were stewards. They're now co-managers with us. This paradigm of management has come so far that they are now, as our co-managers and operators of the, both the reservation system, the visitor management system, and they're maintaining and enhancing the traditional cultural landscape there. They are putting aside funds that they extract from visitors in an agreement with us. They're going to build us a new bathroom, a second bathroom, in a very, very similar situation to what's happening at Huayanapanapa, just to spread out the use. We've moved the parking away from the end of the road there. Again, just like Huayanapanapa, there's two distinct landing areas for visitors. And it's best to have a comfort station servicing both areas. And the new comfort station, after they have gone through a pretty painstaking design process, they're not going to go with a constructed wetland system for the new one. They have instead selected to go with a standard septic and leach with a FujiClean aerobic system to highly treat the water prior to it going into the the new leach field, which is adjacent to a Loi system. So, I think they have, they have been our boots on the ground. They have lived with the constructed wetland system for years as our on-site co-managers. And they see the drawbacks of putting that system in. And so, the brand-new system proposed by the community and lineal descendants is in fact not going to incorporate that system. They believe that the best way to go is the aerobic treatment prior to putting it into the new leach field. And so, that goes, that gets us to our sort of punchline, which is, next slide. We believe, and I think I mentioned this before, but if we were to completely hooly this whole idea and go back to the drawing board and come up with a totally alternative system, we're going to toss this design out. We're going to lose our funding, and we're going to start over, and it's going to be years. However, that is not the reason we're proposing this. It's because of the reasons I just brought up with our concerns with the alternative systems and how they have performed over decades. So, we are looking into potentially nature-based bioreactor systems, right? Like the Huayna system, but I believe that there are, there are some that are subsurface, and they are micro-driven, as opposed to open-plant-based systems. We're looking to those. Again, an aerobic pretreatment unit, we have water, and we have power, so we can use this aggressive pretreatment unit to greatly enhance the quality of treatment prior to putting the effluent into the leach field. And so, I know people were concerned about the nutrient content, and that is what both an aerobic pretreatment and then nature-based bioreactor systems do. And we are prepared to do that. I think when I spoke to you guys initially, two meetings ago, I said I do not believe, because of the places that we manage, their cultural and natural importance, that we should be doing the bare minimum. We should be doing better. And so, I think we are going to commit to you now to do better, but with one of two options. It's pretreatment with a bioreactor or pretreatment with an aerobic unit. And that's what I would like to leave you guys with. And that is where we will head and hope that we will be able to get it approved as such. So, here's our proposed condition. Subject to availability of additional funding, the application shall, shall implement a bioreactor pretreatment unit or aerobic pretreatment unit for the proposed comfort station as determined to be feasible by a sanitary engineer and as permissible by the State Department of Health. And we know we can get these through the State Department of Health. I should add for just a final point, that while we did not meet with other septic engineers, we did meet with the new chief of the wastewater branch for the Department of Health. And he indicated that, and I put him on the spot. I said, what would, what would you recommend? Or what's your advice on these, you know, the potential alternative systems? He said he would never recommend an alternative system such as a composting system when water and power are available. And so, this is our, this is our proposed condition. We hope you'll find it acceptable. We hope it will help us treat the effluent better than we have in almost any other situation. And Huayanapanapa deserves it. So, mahalo.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the end of our prepared materials. The project team would be happy to address any further questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can open up for public testimony now?
Thank you, Chair. So, there's no one signed up in person, but there are three individuals online. First person will be John Blumer Bluewell, followed by Mavis Olivera Maderas and Earl Maderas.
Chair, Michael Hopper. Just a reminder to swear in the testifiers, and if the applicant has any questions, to allow any questions to be asked. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Hopper. So, first testifier, John Blumer Blue.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, Chairperson, Kimberly Thier, and Commission members. Lineal descendant Frank James Olivera and I have testified in writing repeatedly during this process. Our August 8th testimony stated in part, "The Malley County General Plan 2030 Countywide Policy Plan, Goals, Objectives, Policies, and Actions on Page 78 states. Case: Strive for good governments. Goal: Government services will be transparent, effective, efficient, and responsive to the needs of residents." End quote. I would like to add, I was part of the General Plan Advisory Committee that helped to write that statement. Frank and I appreciate your efforts to address the critical sewage and pollution runoff issues at the last meeting and today. We look forward to hearing the new information and recommendations. However, however, a written testimony for the August 27th meeting, which is in the records, pointed out the legal due process rights for good governance have not yet been achieved because there is an inadequate, incomplete, and outdated environmental impact statement document, end quote. We again request a new and revised EAS to adequately address the changed circumstances and new items. Secondly, and in addition, this is extremely important. There is the extremely important and conspicuous absence of a documented consultation with NABU organizations through the federally required Section 106 review process. Lineal descendant testifier Coniloa Kamano raises this essential issue. He opposes the proposed SMA permit without that. He stated consultation with NABU organizations with the Section 106 review process needs to be implemented in this SMA process, and it is the law. Once again, we request the complete court records, including complete Todd reports and all tax records. This would certainly be part of the 106 review process. And we request you defer this matter until the legally required due process rights And we request you to defer this matter until the legally required due process rights
Thirty seconds left.
have been met. We request you to defer this matter until the legally required due process rights have been met. Mahalo Mahalo and mahalo. Thank you so much for your time and good work.
Mahalo testimony. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none questions from the applicant?
Yes, I would just ask a question of Mr. Buell. Just providing the additional information to you that while there was a 2007 EIS, an EA exemption was issued specifically for this project recently. And also, there are no federal funds involved in this process. And therefore, chapter or Section 106 requirements are not triggered. Just wondered if you, being aware of that information, would you want to would you would you still have these same comments or would you want to revise your comments? Thank you.
Still have the same comment and would add briefly. Let's remember that the the country of Hawaii was illegally overthrown by the United States. And there is federal money involved in all this. The United States Congress has publicly apologized for the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian kingdom. That's a matter of record. Everybody knows it. So all this certainly involves federal and state money implementing the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian kingdom. So certainly, you can interpret the Section 106 review process any way you want, but Lord knows it's important to all the all the native Hawaiian people. And once again, the complete court records have not been entitled reports have not been provided. And the 207 ES exemption, you know, that's about that's kind of past. Which order are you going to do things in? I don't think you should do any of this until you put in the new road. Suspend everything else until you put in the new road, but that should be covered with the I know you did an exemption for that, but I know there was an old road down there through the papaya farm. But it doesn't exempt you from having up-to-date information. Look at, thank goodness, that some of your members have been so concerned about the runoff and pollution from the from the sephils and septic systems that you've taken a good look at that. That's a whole new technology and things you should have looked at in the original EIS, but it wasn't available. Nowadays, you're looking at that. So that's great. But you should be looking at the issues of Hawaiian lineal descendant ownership before the park was even created, and you should give the 106 consultation to the native Hawaiian people. That's important for everything. So thank you so much for listening. By the way, in our testimony on the 27th, which is in your records, we gave a link to the complete understanding of the federal one, Section 106 review process. So the link is in our written testimony. Ask you to please go back and read the whole testimony. We tried to be very constructive. And I will say, this is not a defense, but I have served three terms on the Hana Advisory to the Planning Commission. I served on the General Plan Advisory Committee and other things in the committee for about 50 years. So, you know, I know that's what the committee wants, and it's too bad the Hana Advisory Committee just dropped the ball on this, you know. I'm sorry to say that, but it's true. So mahalo and God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Mahalo again. Next testifier.
Next testifier is Mavis Olivera Maderas, followed by Earl Maderas and then Kalai Olivera.
Mavis Olivera, are you there? Shall I? Okay. Mavis Olivera?
Hi, aloha. I'm sorry, I tried to unmute and put on the video and it wasn't letting me.
Oh, no worries. Yep, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
Aloha Chair, Chair, Vice Chair Thompson and Commissioners. My name is Mavis Olivera Maderas, and I am a lineal descendant of Kiwaha, one of a few who received the Mahalia Award for Honokalani from the top of the road to the ocean, including Waianapa Napa State Park. I sent you all a map from a copy of the map from DAGs, who is a state entity, and the maps should be available to the LNR. Mahalo for giving us the opportunity to testify once more. And I wanted to mahalo the LNR because when they came, they made some concessions for the families of the areas. Specifically, they put back the pipe so we can have water at the gravesites, at the cemeteries. And they told us we can still have access. So mahalo for that. I wanted to say include that we're still not happy with the location of the comfort station. We clearly showed them where we wanted it six years ago. And it was closer to where the leach field is on the maps, if you guys can see that. So and we're still concerned about the septic and leach field. I heard the coverage. Thank you very much for for doing that. And hopefully, they're going to follow up with that and have something safer for the environment. Mahalo you guys for that, too. We're hoping. Okay, that was. My personal wish is that they move the bathrooms up to where they build a new road, which they promised. They received funding for, and they're going to start it next year. And so similar to like Haleakala, we stop at the ranger station and there's bathrooms. I think that would be an excellent place to put bathrooms because there should be a gatekeeper or ticket collector who can, you know. And we don't have to worry about any of this, hopefully. We're still not happy with the modern look of the building or the fences. We should be more conducive to the environment like all the other state parks. They use rocks and we wish the fences could be more pleasing to the eyes and to nature.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay. We think that we should give, we should have consideration for our cemetery and our fishing grounds similar to Kaena State Park since it is also a cultural, traditional and customary use that we depend on for our livelihood, some of us, many of us. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Aloha. Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none. Mahalo again for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next testifier is Earl Maderas, followed by Kalai Olivera and then Glenn Nelson.
Okay, aloha and good morning. Me, my answer don't be no, don't build the bathrooms over there at all because of the graves. No matter what you say, the graves mean the most to me as our ancestors said, oh, we got to remember. And how many generations can follow after that with bringing a grave? I have one special bond to this area. Because as you know, I'm married to Mavis. We've been married for 44 years. So all my kids and then all my grandkids and everybody else were brought up with their grandma too, yeah, down there. And so I get on literally special, I fish down there, I love the mountains over there. I did everything down there, too. So you know, I saw not a concern too close to the ocean. Plenty of people rely on a fish down there to eat, yeah. And that's my biggest concern. Okay. So for me, as I was saying, from my point of view, I'm fighting for the ancestors who are gone. Most of the ancestors inside there, I went through everything and look and I know at least 75% of the guys in there are old enough to know 75%. So I'm fighting for them because they cannot speak for themselves. And you know, you talk about the septic thing, you guys give off and backups and everything, yeah. But look what happened to Red Hill. The engineers at Red Hill would never think this would happen. Yes, as time go on, it's going to get old. And I wouldn't doubt it that it will leak someday. I mean, you know, that's 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 my point. I mean, you know, it'll get old. To me, move the bathroom someplace else. You know, that would be the ideal thing to do. You know, I just talking for ancestors who cannot talk for themselves, okay. So with and also with all the land, the state park, yeah, they can put it anywhere. And like they said, the road was promised a long time ago. Remember, they go through.
Thirty seconds left.
If you look at all the meetings, you know what I'm talking about. Because you know exactly what I'm talking about. So thank you and aloha.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none. Mahalo again for your testimony.
Next testifier is Kalai Olivera, followed by Glenn Nelson and then Dustin Farrell.
Kalai Olivera?
Yeah, okay. Aloha.
Aloha. Please go ahead.
Chair, Chair, Vice Chair Thompson and Commissioner. My name is Kalai Olivera, and I am a descendant of Kiwaha. Honokalani. Mahalo folks who are giving us a second chance again. And I just feel I gave my all at all the other meetings. And hope you folks reveal that. I'd like to say that I still stand by all what I've testified to before. And I really like this Haina thing that you guys showed. Anything less invasive to all our historical, the Ina just shouldn't be touched with something so eyesore and a seppage down there. Everything just goes down to the sea. If you sleep, I sleep there. I slept there for 61 years of my life. And you can, when the beach is rough, it shakes all the way up to my house. Our things can rattle. That's how much open it is underground. Everything just going flow through that septic, you know, the overflow and all that. But the natural way is, I feel the way to go. That recycling with that kind of bathrooms and stuff. And I think that's it. I took mahalo you off and aloha. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none. Mahalo again for your testimony.
Next testifier is Glenn Nelson to be followed by Dustin Farrell.
Glenn Nelson?
Online, but we're seem like yes.
Oh. No mic? Oh. Okay. Mr. Nelson, if your microphone is not connecting, you can try sign out of the WebEx and sign in again or call in. Staff can put the number in the chat. Okay, we will come back to Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so next testifier will be Dustin Farrell to be followed by Aloha Smith.
Dustin Farrell? Oh, no longer online? Okay, we can circle back.
So next testifier is Aloha Smith.
Aloha, can you both hear me?
Yes. Are you Aloha Smith?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please go ahead.
Mahalo for the opportunity. My name is Aloha Lani Smith, and I'm a lineal descendant of Honokalani, the Ahupu'ua there and where the state park is. And I just want to mimic all the Ohana and the communities concern of because there's different facets that's been going on. But I I am against the proposed improvements. And you guys have the details. I was ready to testify back then in September. The location of the bathroom for one is not where the family wanted it. It was supposed to be agreed and respected at the time. And I feel that it's not a tourist attraction. For some reason, why put it even close to our our kupuna, yeah, the Ivi kupuna? So that is one of my main concerns. The second concern I have is making sure the state, okay. So Hana is going to have some upcoming development on housing. The HHL, we have about 178 lots to be awarded when it happens. We're in the EA stage at the moment. So the new road is my concern. I don't want the impact to go down to the old road that exists now. And I know at one point they weren't going to do it, but our traffic is going to be horrendous once the housing comes up. And we have the other 25 from the Habitat that is also coming. So I'm looking at the impact of just residence itself versus the tourists, which to me is horrendous. If you guys ever go down there, it looks like cattle walking all over our Waianapa Napa and not respecting. So I just want to say that, you know, please take to heart the previous testimonies from the family from the get-go because it's, to me, it's frustrating. We got to keep repeating ourselves and we got to keep coming to testify. Because I, you know, I'm at work and I just jumped on so that I could just be there to support. But thank you so much for the opportunity to do so. And that's it for now. Mahalo.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the applicant?
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the commission? Uh, Signan, mahalo again for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll try, um, Glenn Nelson, then followed by Dustin Farrell. Okay, uh, Commissioner DeCos?
Yeah, Chair, I think those callers, one of them is texting me and said they're out. The star six is not allowing them to talk.
Mark, I'm on my phone now, is that working?
Oh, there we go.
Is that Glenn Nelson?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
My computer's fairly old, no camera. I borrowed my granddaughter's microphone. Um, let's see, I, I was able to listen to part, part of the testimony and part of the, um, um, description of the experiences that you've had in the state park system with the, uh, clevis toilets. Um, I'll say some of those reasons, of course, could be maintenance, but others are, um, similar experiences that, uh, our national parks have had. That's why, for instance, in the Grand Canyon National Park, Crater Lake National Park, um, a few others. We've replaced all the clevis multrums with our composting toilet because it is easier to maintain and does a much better job of separating liquids from solids and, and it's odorless because there is a fan. Um, we have probably five hundred homeowners with our compost right in their home. And so it's, it's an odorless system if that, um, was an issue with those situations. Um, I, I provided some written information ahead of time to the planning board. Um, but I'd like to reiterate some things. Um, let's see, we had, um, let's see, I think it was, oh, nineteen ninety-three, we installed our first composting toilet, Kaloka Honoka'ao. And it's still there and functioning. Um, it's more and more heavily used today than it was long ago. Um, we have three systems that I know of on Maui. Um, one just south of Hama, uh, Hana in a community center and, and two from Maui Land and Pineapple. Uh, one up in a zipline course up on the mountain. Um, again, those are all functional. Um, let's see, the other thing I guess we wanted to address was, um, the cost of maintenance. Uh, most of the maintenance with the Phoenix is conventional maintenance for, that you'd have with a normal system of cleaning the toilet room, adding toilet paper and such. But there is maintenance on the tank itself. But we have a much, a fairly automated system. There's a little program, a logic controller that actually takes leachate and sprays it back on top of the pile to inoculate it and, and, uh, provide decomposing organisms. Um, and we usually have a little bin of wood shavings on the wall of the toilet room so the people themselves. I'm sorry?
You have thirty seconds left?
Oh, oh, I didn't know. Okay, well, um, in thirty seconds, I'll just say that the dry toilet alternative is somewhat superior and should please or, or address some of the concerns some of the people have had with, with the leach field that you have proposed that is potentially polluting the groundwater there or the service water. Because there will be no discharge with the Phoenixes. All the liquid would evaporate. And annually, you'd remove the solid compost, which is not dripping wet like it probably was with the clevis multrums. Where you pump them out, it actually is just a moist wood shaving-like material that comes out.
Um.
And I made my thirty seconds, probably.
Yes, your time is up. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Um, questions from the applicant?
I'm checking with the project team, project team to see if they have any questions, uh, for Mister Nelson. Um, sorry, Mister Nelson, are you speaking on behalf of, uh, of, uh, Phoenix?
Uh, yes, we manufact- we're the manufacturers of Phoenix composting toilet.
I see. Okay, I don't see any other questions from the project team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Questions from the commission? Vice Chair Thompson, followed by Commissioner DeCos.
Thank you, Mister Nelson. I just, uh, one question is, um, can those systems handle three hundred and ninety flushes a day?
Uh, well, remember, there's no flushes with a dry toilet. Um, so the amount of liquid that enters the tank is much, much less. Uh, typically, according to various studies, uh, uh, one use of the toilet adds about two hundred, excuse me, two hundred milliliters of liquid to the tank. So in the design that we proposed, it had six composting toilets. And we can typically, um, have, um, about a hundred uses a day in a warm climate with proper maintenance on each one of those. So that would be easy to handle that. We have systems in various parks. The Grand Canyon for one, Yosemite, where each tank easily handles that many uses.
Is that seven uses you said?
Um, no, I didn't, um, when I said uses, it can handle, uh, one composting tank can usually handle about a hundred uses a day.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner DeCos? Oh, sorry. I'll come to you after. Yeah. Commissioner DeCos, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'm sure my fellow commissioners appreciate. Got a subject matter expert on dry toilets here. I appreciate that. Uh, thank you, Mister Nelson, for your testimony. Just to clarify, I did see you submitted testimony of the six units. And just to clarify, so those could handle six hundred uses per day if, if it's a hundred uses per toilet?
Correct, with proper maintenance again, and that seems to have been an issue with some of the other state park installations.
Okay, can you describe, I think you mentioned a bit of that maintenance? Um, other than the standard wiping down, you know, toilets that you would do in any other system? What would be, uh, the other requirements as far and as, and the?
Oh, okay, the, the system does take care of itself a bit. It has a program of a logic controller that actually keeps track of door openings. It keeps track of the energy that's stored in the batteries, uh, temperature. Well, temperature's not an issue in Hawaii. Um, yeah, but the maintenance person who would go there after doing the cleanup of the toilet room, um, they would, um, go into the basement area, the lower level where the tanks are. Um, and, uh, open the upper, and there's an upper access door, and they would see if there's a bunch of trash in the toilets. I, I'm hoping that this site, they'd have some trash containers so that would avoid, they'd avoid that. Um, but they'd pick out any trash. We supply a trash grabber with the tank. Um, the maintenance process, by the way, is also fairly odorless uh, because of the exhaust fan can be kicked onto the highest speed, which moves a lot of air. So having the upper access door open and makes it, doesn't make it an odor problem for the maintenance person. But they would then add some wood shavings to the tank or some coarse material. I think Kaloka Honoka'ao at one time were using, um, macadamia nutshell, uh, shells. Um, and, uh, but there has to be some sort of bulking agent because human waste doesn't compost well by itself. Um, and so that person would add the requisite amount of wood shavings to make sure that there's no puddling liquid on top of the compost pile. Uh, there's a time shaft that goes through the tank with spokes on it that they'd rotate to mix that in. And also, because the pile will build up under the toilet, they would have to hand rake that pile. There's a, a four-tined hand cultivator that's used for that task. And that would be about it. And they would check moisture level too. Um, not all toilets, when there are six of them there, are used the same amount, so some might be drier. And so you can actually, uh, or the maintenance person can manually select, um, to take the, uh, accumulated leachate and spray it back on top of the compost pile, uh, to, to moisten it. And that's about what the maintenance effort would be. Um, we, we are pretty sure that we'd evaporate all of the liquid, but just in case, we do have a holding tank for any excess leachate. Um, that might, uh, if there's a large volume of use at one time, that, that might actually receive some leachate from the tanks. And then a compost removal, unlike with the clevis where you probably pumped it out in some cases. Um, the Phoenix does a good job of separating liquids from solids. So the material one removes from the bottom of the tank and you don't empty the tank. But it's only the oldest portion that's, that's probably three years old. Um, it, uh, is manually removed, about twelve cubic feet in one removal. And that would have to be transported to a site where it would be allowed to be, um, disposed of. It could be onsite. Some of our national parks do inside volcanoes, just puts it out on the lava and lets the sun cook it. Um, some places, they actually, Yosemite used to bring it out and put it in some solar, um, solar heated, um, containers and then use it for trail vegetation back in the park. Um, so that would be that then. Again, the compost removal would be annual. Uh, it takes probably two people, um, about, let's say, two hours to do a removal, uh, a complete removal in one tank. And that's the extent, uh, that's presuming. Certainly, there would be some maintenance effort if we had a pump fail or a, or a fan fail. But they're easily replaced.
Okay, so just to be clear, uh, the management difference, so the time, there's the daily activities of adding the wood shavings, knocking down the pile. How much extra time that'd be for that maintenance person to do that part of it?
Uh, so what would be the time for that? Oh.
Yeah, the additional time.
I think that that would probably be ten minutes a tank at most.
Okay, and once a year, you're saying you'd have to remove the twelve cubic feet from the tank?
Correct, that's right.
Okay. Um, and the odors involved, I sounded like from the testimony, the removal of the cured compost would have quite, would be not a very pleasant?
If the system is maintained properly with sufficient bulking agent added to the pile and stirred in, the material, again, the difference between the clevis multrum that you have in your parks and, and the Phoenixes. The Phoenix has an elevated porous floor and all the leachate drips through that. And so the material is not store, the solids are not anaerobic. Um, they could receive, um, air, there's airflow underneath that floor. So it can, um, aerate the bottom of the compost and then there's aeration, um, on the sidewalls of the tank. Uh, and so, um, it's not an anaerobic smelling job. Sometimes it smells actually quite good, like a, like a west for, a wet forest floor or something.
Okay, so it's, it smells like comp- cured compost, kind of?
It smells like compost, yes.
Okay, last question. Um, there was a lot of talk of the cost, the cost of all this. You mentioned it briefly. I did see a quote in your. Can you discuss the, the cost of the system you think would handle the six hundred uses per day?
Sure. We didn't know some things, but we, we could supply and install one of our buildings that had the six toilets in it, one handicap stall. Um, but we didn't know about, uh, like a concrete foundation, so that was excluded. And also the transportation to the site on, on the, uh, road down past Hana. Uh, we didn't know what that would be. But it, it would be roughly half a million dollars for, um, for our installation.
Okay, I apologize. I did have one last question. So you, it sounds like you've installed these in many different national state parks, private homes. The experience that was provided in the, in the presentation, how, how often does that come up? With those installations you, you're familiar with?
Um, do you mean how often?
Those, those negative experiences.
The negative, oh, well, that happens when maintenance lapses, and that's an issue sometimes when they have a concessionaire that the park service or a forest service has hired. And there's no continuity in maintenance and the new person has never been instructed on how to maintain them. Um, so, um, certainly that comes up. We, we have in lots of our national parks like the Grand Canyon again, uh, excellent maintenance there. Crater Lake, we do not. Um, homeowners tend to take very good care of their tank because it's right in their home. So that, that's worked out well for them. Um, certainly, um, the issues, we've tried to design this tank so that it's much easier to maintain. And so that the problems you have with the clevis, and I, I don't know if any of the people who uh, are present there today have experience with that, but the clevis is a difficult tank to, um, both to remove compost and to maintain because it's so large. The, uh, the Phoenix is not that way. I designed it. I, I was the, uh, original designer of the clevis. Um, to, in the United States, I worked for them for about six years, uh, before designing the Phoenix.
Okay.
So it's, uh, it's easier to maintain.
Thank you, Mister Nelson. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, certainly.
Thank you. Um, questions from the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think Alan Carpenter from State Parks, uh, did have a question for the testifier. Alan, are you able to, uh, unmute?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, and thanks, Glenn. And, um, yeah, I wish you'd been able to talk before because I did wanna sort of bend your ear on this when I reached out to you. But I do have, so you mentioned Yosemite. I, I've been going to Yosemite since before I could walk. Um, I was, I was there last summer. I, I was in the high country, back, back into May Lake, ten thousand feet elevation. They had some of the nicest flush toilets I've ever seen. So I guess my question is, um, have you ever installed toilets in a national park if they're, if they have water service available? Or do you only do it in areas where water's not available?
Oh, boy, let's see, um. I think in our national parks, I don't believe there was water ever available at the sites because most of our systems are in backcountry locations. Uh, if not all of them, um, so Rainier, Crater, Yosemite Sequoia, Grand Canyon, and a few other smaller ones, Nauvoo National Monument. Oh, volcanoes, we have, I think we'll have nine systems in volcanoes and they're all, they're all backcountry.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And then just a couple extra comments. And one of the things that I think is important for you guys to understand about the operation. We are, we, we, we have some of the lowest staffing levels in the country. We're actually the second lowest staffed state park system in the country. Um, but yeah, we're top ten in visitations, so we're, we're way behind the curve in our ability to, to keep up with general maintenance. And also, when I was talking to the, the, um, new, um, Department of Health wastewater branch chief, he, he made a point, and that is that we simply do not have a culture here that supports participatory maintenance from our people, both visitors and locals. People are just, if we all had these systems in our houses, we would know how to use it, we would know how important it is. But to get, you know, four hundred users a day to participate in the maintenance by sticking their hand into a vat of sawdust or wood chips, it's tough. And, and not only that, but they throw all manner of everything in there. And our guys have to clean all that out. So that's a, that is a cultural issue. Um, and it is, but it's a, it's a huge maintenance issue for us because we have to clean up after the messes and the lack of participation by the public in the maintenance of these systems. Um, and the final point I'll make is Department of Health will not let us clean these, the, the compost out, compost it or not, and put it anywhere in a landscape. We, we cannot, well, and we don't have spaces we can do that within our parks. It all has to be pulled away, so. Thank you for that.
And, and I understand that. That's similar to some of our other parks, that some of- And I understand that that's similar to some of our other parks, that some of them, not just the national parks, but we have a lot of state parks and and other sorts of facilities. And sometimes it has to be transported offsite. And commonly, like in a national park that's fairly large, they'll have a sewage treatment lagoon or something and they'll just throw the compost in there. In Yosemite, they actually, the concessionaire who does some of the maintenance disaction actually throws it in their corral with all their mules, which isn't advisable. And you probably don't have mules over there. But it's, but I can understand the cultural problem, but it is a fairly simple process. And I know people here seem to do quite well with, they don't put their hand in. We have a little scoop on a bead chain that actually has some scoopwood shavings and dump it in the toilet.
Okay. Any further questions from the applicant?
Chair, I think we have another question from Larry at State Parks.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to make a, I guess, to have a question regarding the Clovis and the Phoenix. We would have to procure this services or this system. So, you know, we might not end up with the Phoenix if we wanted to, say, purchase that. We might end up with, you know, Clovis instead. So I'm not sure what the the difference would be in the systems. I know Mr. Nelson, you know, has different, I guess he has a different, he's the one who designed that that system, you know? So I'm not sure what the difference would be between the Phoenix and the Clovis, but I can't, I wouldn't be able to just procure the Phoenix system. So it's like buying a Toyota and a Nissan, right? I mean, I would have to, if I'm speaking to Mr. Nelson, I'm sure I'm going to get all the highlights from the Phoenix system, like as if I was, you know, speaking to the Clovis rep. So secondly, I think Alan touched on.
Chair. This is my question.
I know we need to turn off the questions and not discussion.
Yeah. And and then just a reminder to give the applicant the opportunity after the testimony is done to respond to anything. But right now, we really need to have there be a question to the testifier. And if there's none from you, the the state or the commissioners have that testifier, you can say they can go and then you can have the rebuttal after that. But that's just, you understand, I think, what I'm asking about.
Yes, I do. And I heard Mr. Pacheco said he had questions coming up.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding safety of our personnel. When they're doing this, turning and cleaning of this system, you know, are they are they at risk basically? You know, that that's a that's a important part right there for me.
Indeed, it is. And and in our application guide or our, I'm sorry, our maintenance manual even says about wearing proper safety gear. So they'd wear safety glasses, rubber gloves, and a dust mask if needed. But fortunately, what we have again for the composter, before they open that upper access door, if they just press this little button on the front of the tank, it kicks the fan onto the highest speed. And also, you can take the, there's a pump on the tank that takes leachate, presuming there is some, and sprays it back on the top of the pile so there wouldn't be any dust. In the compost removal process, certainly there's a chance of exposure. But again, using the proper safety gear, the personal safety equipment would would be necessary and and probably prevent any problems with with infections or anything.
Great, thank you.
I've been doing this, by the way, for for a while. I started in 1974 and I've never gotten sick from a compost.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any further questions from the commission? Okay, Singan, thank you for your testimony.
Sure, thank you.
Did we want to try Dustin Farrell?
Sure.
One more time?
Yeah. Is he online?
I don't see him on, but there are two guests, so not quite sure.
I'm on here if you can hear me.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to download the app. I did not have WebEx.
Okay. Can you state your name and go ahead?
My name is Dustin Farrell. I am with St. Charles County Parks in Missouri, where I guess I'm just giving a quick testimony on the composter units. We have approximately 30 of these units spread out from all of our parks, installed by Glenn Nelson. We use them every day. We are going to continue to put them in future parks. St. Charles County is one of the largest growing parks departments in the country and definitely Missouri. So we have a lot of attention get to them, a lot of population using them. We, time to time, do talk to our, you know, the public that uses them. We don't have a lot of negative tip about smell. These are not like a porta potty or a Johnny on the spot. I've worked for the county for 11 years. They do not smell. As Glenn mentioned, there's a fan in there and as long as everything operates fine, which things do go out, but the parts are very quick to get and easy to replace. They don't go out often. With the fan going, there isn't a smell. I can understand and respect that Maui is a high class, so to speak, area that might frown upon something like this, but they are definitely built and designed for parks departments, for areas where it might not be best suited to have leach fields or septic tanks that are buried underground, especially when you're pretty much at sea level. So I can see where some of those can be problems for you guys, which why I think this might be a better option for you. The other thing I heard was mentioned was the cleanout is not desirable. However, again, when we clean the bottom of them out once a year, whatever, when it's time and only take out that 12 square feet or whatever it may be that you need for your unit, it, there's no smell. There's no smell. It's just like grabbing a bag of mulch for your house and putting it around your tree. There's there's not a smell of any kind of feces or compost or whatever you may have. So I'm, we stand behind them. We stand for them. We still have them. They are very low maintenance. Now, granted, my definition of maintenance could be different than anybody else's. We expect our guys to check them every day when they clean the parks, open the parks.
30 seconds left.
Flip the toilet seat lid, clean them, but very, very little maintenance, very little negative comment, comments from the public from them. Like I said, we'll, we'll keep using them. I don't really have anything else to say.
Okay. Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the applicant? No questions from the applicant? Question from Commissioner DeGosse.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. A couple of clarifying questions. The, so there was mention that getting users to adjust their behavior when using these, how do you guys deal with that? You have a, as far as the adding the the bulking agent?
Are we talking about as we have to add the shavings to them?
Do you have your 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 users add the shavings after use or you just, or how do you add the bulking agent?
So our, we we do it ourselves. We do not allow the public to use them. I think honestly, most of that probably stands behind. If you leave anything out, it's just going to get used inappropriately. People are going to put too much in it. So by us doing it, we regulate how much goes in it for the right amount that goes in it so that the composting unit breaks down and it works as it's supposed to versus just leaving it out and hoping that someone does it. Now, I understand that could, you know, mean, well, you know, aesthetically, does this, is this that pleasing for people? But ultimately, we haven't had too many people complaining about it and we and we get 4 million visitors in our parks a year.
Okay. And there was mention of trash, a lot of trash goes in these. How do you guys deal with that?
Well, we have a, we keep a trash can in there. We do, I would say, for the most part, everybody's respectful. We have a sign, you know, please no trash, no feminine products, no nothing like that goes in there. From time to time, you will still find a piece of trash or a item, but you simply with long tongs, go in the bottom of the basement or however yours is set up, open the door, reach in, get it out, just so it doesn't mix in. And it's never a problem. We have had not had a problem with too much trash in ours.
Okay. And and shoot, I had one more question. Oh, are you are you getting a commission from Mr. Nelson as a Phoenix promoter?
Absolutely not. I wish maybe.
Okay. I just want to get on record. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you again for your testimony. Does anybody else sign up to testify? Nope? Okay. Last call for testimony. If you'd like to testify, please write your name in the chat. Otherwise, going once, going twice, three times. Okay, testimony's closed. Commissioners, questions? Or we can take a quick break? We haven't taken a break.
Chair, it might be appropriate to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any of the testimony now before you get into questions if if they want. If they've already done it, that's fine, but that would be maybe a good time for that or take your break, but as long as you give them some time to do that.
Okay. Yeah. Since we're two hours into it, I'm going to give everybody a 10 minute break and then we'll come back and the applicant can make any statements they deem necessary and then we'll go into commission questions. So we'll see everybody back at 11:15. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you for sticking with us. This is, again, our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 8, 2024. And we are in the middle of the item regarding Wayanapana State Park. So as Mr. Hopper stated, the applicant can have time for rebuttal if so desired. Otherwise, we can go into commission questions.
Oh, thank you very much. It looks like the applicant has has no further comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, questions from the commission? Commissioner Hippolito, followed by Commissioner DeGosse.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I have a question for Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Carpenter.
Good morning.
At your IANA facility, you showed some images where you have this fenced area where you got natives planting. Does that, is that like a nursery? Do you use that as a nursery? Does those natives can be replanted other places? Have you done anything like that?
So to my knowledge, we haven't. The plants are intended and they're specifically selected, right? They're sort of semi aquatic plants or wetland plants, like Ahuava, things like that, where they're, you know, it it's an artificial wetland, but it's all, it's native plants and water tolerant. And I don't, generally, the the habitat maintains fairly well. We have to, it has to be weeded, right? Because there's all all kinds of invasives. But it's not intended to outplant it. And I don't, I honestly cannot tell you if that's because they are involved in the uptake of effluent or it's just that the system requires them to be in there all the time, right? I don't think we have to replace them very often. I mean, so in in general, it is a stable system. I just think it's a little under capacity for that particular spot.
And that, I would imagine that retention basin is lined with some sort of material?
That's correct. So it it has an impervious membrane, right? So it's watertight, which is why when it when it rains heavily, it overtops because there is, there's zero seepage, right? It's made to flow through the gravel media, you know, from one end of the system where the effluent comes in, the plants uptake it on the way across very slowly and then it flows out the other side into the leach field.
Okay. And so if you could run me through the flow again, so from the water closet goes to the septic tank, from the septic tank goes to the leach field and from the leach field it seeps into, is that correct?
So we actually have two septic tanks in line and then it goes through both of those. Those solids are pumped on occasion. The the liquid overflow from the septic tanks goes directly into the wetland, the constructed wetland. And then after it flows through the wetland, which is where the the plants do their job of taking out the nitrates, et cetera, then it exits into the leach field to a much higher treated degree than it would if it simply came straight out of the double septic tanks.
Do you know how much the discharge from the system, the wetland, goes into the leach field? Do you know by day or by how much?
I I don't. I think there, I mean, it's rated for something. And as as I mentioned in the presentation, it, we have too much effluent to be handled by the current system. So we switch weekly between the constructed wetland system and the standard direct from septic tanks into the leach field, right? We didn't, and we didn't construct the wetland system that way with that with that sort of overflow potential. That was because the the wetland system was was a solution that came in after the original septic system. So we backflow it into the original septic system when there's a problem or, in this case, regularly, weekly or every other week, sorry.
And this is, Mr. Carpenter, one of the, or that's a propose to us as the commissioners to look at, to consider, is that what your proposal is today?
Our proposal is to look at some additional treatment between the septic tanks or, sorry, between the the comfort station, between the, where we're basically going to have all of our flushing toilets and the system we presently have designed, which is a gravity fed septic and leach field, which is the bare minimum DOH approved treatment system that we already have approval for. And what we are offering up is to do something better. It could be a bioreactor. It could be an aerobic system to pre-treat before we get into the leach field. And we can't, we can't commit to any option right now because it has to be reengineered.
Right, right. So you haven't even looked at like using the existing footprint of the existing propose and putting in this added removal process on the overlay of the existing area? Have you guys done that?
We we have, we have confirmed that there is room to add additional treatment without moving the current leach field. We may have to, we may have to move the septic tank one way or another, but the layout would remain the same. There'd be a single extra component in between.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Sure.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner DeGosse.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Gwendolyn, describe Mr. Last name.
It's Rivera.
Rivera, thank you. When did you guys receive, when did you guys start working on the design or receive the request to work on the design for this, if you remember? What year?
I I don't remember exactly the year. I was looking at my notes and saw that the EA exemption for the project was issued in 2022. So I think it was sometime in the 2020, 2022 timeframe that we as consultants got involved. I understand the original design over on Valerie's side got started before that.
So the design, who is doing the design prior to that? To to your guys' involvement?
Well, the civil engineer on board is Tanaka, Kirk Tanaka. I don't know if you have any questions about the design for him?
I guess I'm just trying, I know there's sunk costs into this, which is obviously a concern. So I'm just wondering how long ago was, did this sort of process start? I know the procurement takes a long time. So are we talking four years, more than that?
That my company has been involved?
Yeah, for, it sounded like four years.
I think something between two to four years, but again, I'd have to check to get it exact.
Okay. And have you guys ever designed sort of anything that, like, I don't know if you're familiar with the NSF 240? sort of anything that, like, I don't know if you're familiar with the NSF 245, so a higher level of nitrogen removal? Have you ever done that in your designs?
So my role in the project is the SMA permitting and land use, so we're not, we're not involved with the design.
Oh, okay.
You might, I guess Commissioner Dicos, just to make sure you're on a line of questioning that's pertinent to the project?
Yes, yes. I'm just wondering what, when this design, okay, my other question is for state parks. Alan?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. So do you, when you guys initially, again, I'm trying to understand the procurement, and I want to be sensitive, you guys, it's a long process. It's gotta go, I don't know if it goes out to bid, but, you know, I just want to know how long you guys have been working on this?
So I'm gonna have to defer to probably engineering who's overseeing the procurement process on our behalf. Or Martha may know. I think it's, I think it's in that two to four-year range. And I think, I do know that if we have to go back to the drawing board, as I alluded to earlier, this funding will lapse, and we will have to then, you know, we will have to reapply for the funding. This is CIP funding, right? It's appropriated by the legislature. We are at the end of the period by which we have to encumber the funds, or they will lapse.
Okay, and the cost, the total cost estimated for the project?
Who has the total cost? I apologize. It's around two, two-point-something million, and it's not all just the restroom.
Right.
What do you mean?
So the, you mentioned, I appreciate you trying to revamp and add some additional treatment. When I said to research the bioreactor, I should have probably been more specific with the ridge to reefs, which they're doing a lot. They're doing more and more out there. Basically, it goes in between the septic and the leach field, but it's a very contained, very small, I think they're 14 by four by six or something, does 1,000 gallons. So in your case, 2,100 gallons, you'd have two of those boxes that evaporate 60%. And I think in some instances, DOH has credited some of the leach field because it's much less water. So just when you're considering this, I appreciate the wetland, but again, it's over-engineered, probably way too much that you need. And the bioreactor, the simple container, and you mentioned, you know, Hana's high-rain event, these you can keep the water out of them, so it's not at ground level and all that. But I, so from the 2 million, I'm just, again, trying to address costs. I guess if you did, what I'm struggling with is we, we're trying to address the cesspool issues, right? We have this $3.5 billion conversion solution to septic cesspool, a septic leach field, right? That's costing 40 grand for a lot of our property owners. So what's frustrating for me is I know there are good solutions. We heard two testifiers talk about these systems being implemented in national parks all over. They're simple. They get rid of black water. They're odorless, they're low maintenance. I mean, I'm familiar with them because here's a building in Oregon, the PAU building, it's a five-story building. They do, they have all Phoenix composters in there. So I know there's solutions that address it, and we're trying to clean up water quality. So I'm struggling with a two-point-something-million-dollar project. I understand there's some cost where you could build at least the, well, some of the proposals for a half million. I have to justify a system that's gonna be much better for the environment, probably require no ground disturbance, no leachate whatsoever, and what you've already spent four years developing and doing and have the money set aside. So I'm, it's a bit of a struggle for me here. If you were, what about, I don't know if this, would you implement one or two of these? Because I think what we have here is a gap in understanding and knowledge and demonstration of what actually works, what actually is feasible. If you incorporated that, you know, maybe two of the toilets were composting, you would have, with the ability, if things went bad, you could divert those. I'm guessing that's an added cost, right? There would be no cost savings.
That is definitely an added cost, and I appreciate, you know, the exercise you were doing in your mind as well, and sorry, I've got some. This process, our engineering contract started in 2019. Okay, so that's, that's when it began. It's $2.9 million overall. Not all of it is the conversation. We have road improvements and other things as well. And I do, I mean, to, to your point and to what I think we're committing to here, we are trying to commit to much better treatment than the Department of Health requires, which is all we have to do, right? And that's already been approved. We're, we don't want to put poorly-treated effluent, even if it's legal, into this environment. So we are now here committing to do that by a couple of means that doesn't tank our entire project. As for the composters, I mean, I've tried to make our case for why we have concerns. You know, I appreciate what both gentlemen said. I can add that in Missouri, they have this thing called winter that shuts it down for months, right? So that, that helps with composting and natural processes to take place as well. We're open 365 days a year and almost at the same volume throughout. I do believe that in this particular park, that a more standard flush toilet is appropriate for the quality that we're trying to give to our users, including local residents. The one place I would say we could potentially test out one of these in a lower-use environment would be back to what the folks said, when we build our new road, if we need a small capacity unit for the staff who's up at the top of that road, right? Because then it's a small footprint. We don't have any parking areas, areas planned along that area. They should have access to a facility. That might be the most appropriate place to test these out in a low-use environment.
Okay, and if you can help me understand, you said the quality of use for the residents. So I've used dry toilet system for almost four years, so I'm very familiar, and it's probably unfair. If people haven't had exposure, they immediately think of what you described earlier, just this nasty out. So when somebody is using the wet toilet system, I've been, I've been to public wet toilet facilities. They are not pleasant by any means. But you're telling me that the alternative of a dry toilet is worse? Is that what you're saying?
I am saying, based on my 33 years of using composting toilets in my park system, unequivocally, it is worse.
Okay, we'll have to have you come use mine at some point.
I, you know, I've used them in people's houses, and they are fine, right? I believe that at the residential level, when you're responsible for that use and maintenance, absolutely. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't, I don't trust our users to help us with the maintenance, and we don't have the staff to meet the minimum requirements, right? And that's something we can't get without the legislature giving us more positions.
So, again, I'm trying to be sensitive, but I just want to make sure the facts are there. So the users don't necessarily have to change any behavior. They don't have to add anything. They just use, as the gentleman from Missouri mentioned, they don't allow them to add any bulking agent because they know it's gonna spread all over and kids will throw it around or whatever. So they spend the extra five minutes, 10 minutes, adding it at the end of the day when they clean out the systems. So the extra maintenance you're talking about, can you expand? Like, you don't have the staff, the capacity to do that extra 10 minutes? Is that what you're saying, suggesting?
That, that is what I'm suggesting. I think these systems are, you have to add them frequently, right? And going back to what the gentleman from Missouri said.
Daily, yes. You'd have to add a bulking agent daily from the top of the bowl, yes.
Right, and the gentleman from Missouri alluded to something about aesthetics, which I assume he means, you know, that there's, it's not mixed frequently. So you're basically sending it to an open pit toilet for a little while till they can conduct the maintenance. I don't want to put words into his mouth, but that's kind of what I thought he was saying.
Yes, I think that's.
Between the public throwing in with each use versus doing it after 300 uses.
Yes.
Aesthetics, stench, whatever you want to call it, I don't think it's a risk I want to take this close to cultural sites and a cemetery.
Okay, stench is a different issue, but yes, aesthetics, there, we know that the odor has been addressed by the, my last question, the, so you have a sludge component to the septic tank, right? This is untreated sludge. That's the purpose of the septic is to separate the solids from the liquid. That sludge, I think on the last hearing meeting, you said every month or two months that gets pumped out. Can you talk about how long that takes, who does that, the cost of that, and where does that get transported to?
For that, I'm going to have to defer to our, to Larry, our on-island superintendent. He deals with the data they made. Larry, can you handle that?
Yes, we currently pump the septic system at Wayanapa Napa once a month at $2,500 a pump. So once a month, it gets pumped out and serviced. And currently, our vendor, who we have is Valeo Pumping. So they send a truck in from central Maui, and they pump out the system and they haul the solids back out.
Okay, would you agree that once a year hauling out, or they say 12 cubic meters of mulch is probably less maintenance, less costly?
I kind of agree with Alan, as far as the maintenance goes. I wouldn't want to see our guys doing that. We don't have nobody to post at the composting station to do that type of work daily. We have 12 cabins that they maintain. The whole park area, we have five people in that park. He's talking about days off and vacations. So we're limited, and until we can get more permissions, you know, it's, they work, they work hard out there, so.
So, just to be clear, so those, those comfort stations are not getting cleaned daily?
They clean it three times a day, at least. Unless, unless if, unless it's, someone reports that there's something going on or a mess, then they'll go back and clean it more after.
Okay, so adding a bulking agent to each one at the end of the day, that would be, that would be too much additional work. Because the, it's, you know, again, I'm just repeating what the testifiers are saying, but they said two hours per unit per year, and some were like, they said every three years. So two hours to remove the cured compost, the old part, that's two times six, so essentially one and a half days of work to remove that, and then it's just adding the bulk of the engine every day. That is the additional work you're thinking about for your staff, that they wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be fair to impose on them? Or am I missing something?
Personally, I wouldn't want to put our people at risk of doing that stuff, so it's kind of hard for me to compliment on that.
Okay. From a risk standpoint, the, you know, wet toilets, the water carries the vectors with the pathogens, all that. I were very well aware of folks getting sick from sewage water, from black water contamination. Are you aware of anybody that's gotten sick from a dry toilet system? I tried very hard to look, look for that. I couldn't find anything, any example.
We just had that big issue in Kalalau that could be a contributing factor. I'm not saying it was, but it could be a contributing factor. So, yeah, I'm not, I don't have that expertise there.
To me, how, if you can explain to me how that was a con, they think the person mentioned there was no wash-down station. That's, that's a different, that's a different, okay. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I think we have, we need to transition into a better system. What we're using is not working. So I know systems that do work. They're simple, they're much cheaper, they're safer, they're cleaner. It's just frustrating for me, but this conversation is great. I think a lot of people are learning. It's not always comfortable for everyone to talk about this stuff. And I hope, you know, next time we, we get one of these in front of us, we, we're a little further ahead, there's a little more information. If you guys are willing to, well, you already answered that question, not willing to, to put one in this unit because of the fear and the concerns. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate, I'm sorry I took up so much of your time.
No, thank you. Appreciate the learning discussion, but I think Mr. Carpenter had his hand up, and then Mr. Pacheco had his hand up too? If you folks had something more you wanted to say?
Sure, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point. I think we've kind of made our case. And I agree, I agree with Commissioner that we do need to start looking at alternative locations. And I love talking about this, according to our administrator, you know, what we deal with is people parking in poop all the time. That's, that's what our management has to deal with, and we want to find better ways to deal with all of them. The, the question about the pathogens and whether, whether the composting toilets were a contributing factor, they most definitely were, according to the Department of Health, in the latest norovirus outbreak. They tested the toilet seats in particular. They were positive for norovirus. So it was one of the vectors of transmission where at least 50 people got very sick, and some had to be airlifted out. Again, that's partially because the, the, the best way to to eliminate that transfer is soap and water and other, other aspects, you know, other ways of sterilizing simply don't work. But it was a unique situation. Again, I'm not blaming that on the composting toilets. I do think that in a place with this high of a daily capacity use, it might not be the best place to throw away $2 million and start over and experiment. But I think there are places, like at the top of the road, like at Waylua Valley overlook on the way down the highway, there might be locations where we should and, and could do this in the future. And that's, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Dicos?
And, and just to, I sympathize. Department of Health is in the stone age on this, and I understand it's very difficult to get them to bite on any advancement. I think they're starting, or starting to allow, like I mentioned, some of these bioreactors and, and giving credit for the reduced leachate. So I understand you're up against the wall with DOH, everybody is, so I'm sensitive to that. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? I do have one follow-up question. I'm curious about the usage of the Haina Comfort Station versus what would be the usage at this comfort station?
So at Haina, we, we used to have upwards of 2,000, and occasionally as high as nearly 3,000 people a day. With the master plan and the changes in management there, we now cap it at 900 persons per day. So there are 900 visitors daily, and that is, that's being borne by that single comfort station and the single constructed wetman septic system, which is not meeting that capacity, which is among the reasons that we are proposing. Actually, we are, it's already a bid. It's gonna be, its construction will start before the end of the year on a second comfort station at Haina with a different treatment system, but it's the aerobic treatment system that will pre-treat and get all the nitrates, the bulk of the nitrates out before it goes into the leach field.
Okay, I'm just thinking about how you were saying, you know, there's potential overflows of the wetland from time to time, and that you need to switch between bypassing the wetland and going with the traditional system. But it sounds like this one would have far less usage than that? And maybe be able to keep within capacity?
It, it's possible. I mean, obviously, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I, I think we would, it's gonna be one of the options that we explore.
Okay, thank you. I've been to Haina just last year, and I've hiked Kalalau, and I understand, you know, that Um, I've been to Hana just last year and I've hiked Kalalau and I understand, you know, the toilets along the way and you think that people who are outdoor appreciators and hikers would be very respectful of composting toilets, but I have seen personally how much rubbish gets stuck in them nonetheless. So I understand the balance you're trying to strike with, you know, the users you have and the system you're trying to put in.
Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. Um, any further questions from the Commission? Um, seeing none, we can hear the recommendation from the Department.
Hi. Uh, today, the Department has received more than twenty uh, testimony emails that were sent to this body via email from the Department to which the agenda posting was last updated, uh, today. The application meets the criteria for a SMA use permit. The Department is recommending approval based on the eleven conditions as listed in the staff report and recommendation. In consideration of the foregoing, the Department recommends that the Maui Planning Commission adopt the planning department's report and recommendation prepared for the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Hana Advisory Committee meeting and revised again for the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Maui Planning Commission meeting as the findings of fact, conclusion of law and recommendation, and to authorize the Director of Planning to transmit said written decision and order on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
This is Michael Hopper. I just wanted maybe for the record to have confirm that, um, any Commissioner that missed any portion of this, because there were multiple meetings on this, and also Commissioner Ward confirmed that they've had the opportunity to review the whole record in this matter, including the past meeting, um, minutes or recordings, and is prepared to, to deliberate and vote that that is a requirement, because this is a contested case, but I just wanted to check that on record. I, I don't remember, I know Commissioner Ward is new, but I don't remember if any of the other Commissioners had missed any portion of these meetings and just wanted everyone to confirm that they've had the opportunity to review the entire record before decision-making.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Hopper. Maybe we can go around to everybody, um, starting with Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I have had the opportunity to review everything. Um, it's a lot to review and digest very quickly, so, uh, I have. Um, but I potentially would, uh, actually choose to abstain, um, simply because I didn't have enough time to truly understand it and I want to make a fair and appropriate decision, so I would be abstaining.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Um, Commissioner Kialoha?
Yes, I have been here for, believe everything.
Yep. Uh, Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, I believe I've been here throughout, I wasn't, can, can maybe expand on what was contested about this? I don't think that was clear to me.
It, it's automatically a contested case like any other proceeding where the Commission is the, uh, decision maker on it. So it's a contested case hearing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Hipolito?
Yeah, confirmed, um, I was present and also read documents.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes, confirmed, I, um, read and followed everything, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair Thompson?
Likewise, here from all.
Um, and I will also confirm that I've been here for all the meetings on this and I've read through all the documents that we have. Um, so Commissioners, deliberation? Um, we have new, well, there's a new condition proposed by the applicant. Um, and we've got all sorts of testimony, I will note, on the location of the comfort station as well. Um, we can discuss if you feel that necessary or we can entertain a motion.
Vice Chair?
Thanks, Chair. See, just a little bit of discussion before a motion would be, um, so Mr. Perry and also Hana, they came and opposed that. And now the applicant met with them and are they in an agreement of on all those, the, the issues that they had? Location, et cetera?
Um, we can ask.
Um, I would refer to Martha Yent to respond on the status of, um, of outreach and coordination with the the local residents. The question was about, um, Mr., Mr. Perry's comments.
We did have this discussion at the August twentieth site visit when we laid out the, um, the size and the location of the comfort station in the leach field. Mr. Perry's comment to us was that he could live with it. Um, that, you know, he did ask, is there any opportunity to move it any further towards Hana? And so I did try to address that when I showed the map, um, and discuss the limitations in trying to do so.
And he's willing to live with it where it's at now? Your proposal?
Correct, he's, uh, he's the resident that lives closest to the, the comfort station location. And he's been present at all of the, the meetings that we've held with the community. And, um, he's, you know, he's always spoken to the need for a comfort station, but I think he's, he's concerned about the location relative to the cemetery, um, and just wanted to see it placed as far away as possible.
Thank you, understandable.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, so it, it was moved like another twenty-something feet, is that correct?
Um, it was, that was closer to the park road. But trying to move it further towards the Hana side does create concerns because of the topography and the drainage gully that's nearby.
Okay. Do the, do we, I guess, is the new, new set location in plans somewhere?
Uh, the plans do reflect the location that we've been sharing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the application we put in, the location and the plans in there are accurate and consistent with what is still proposed. The revisions to the location, um, came after the, uh, previous community meeting, um, but before the preparation of these plans.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair?
Sure, one more, where the, uh, was the road also sorted out? They had some issues about where the cutouts would be and if it was encroaching on someone's property. Can you explain to me?
Um, we did, uh, stake out the pullover areas at the August twentieth meeting as well. And we asked people as they kind of drove into the park to, to take a look and see, these areas are already being used as pullovers. So what we're proposing is just to add some pavement to reduce the erosion that goes on along the edges of the road. And we did confirm that it is within the road rightfully. Um, the state is not the owner of the road and we, you know, we've recognized that, but we do have an easement for access and utilities. So we've proposed, um, you know, any protection of the rock walls. There are a couple of locations where we're in proximity to rock walls that defined, uh, people's property. And so we, we are going to add buffers during the construction to make sure that those walls are protected.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and just to further confirm, you know, thinking about the concerns from the residents, so this is like as far away from the cemetery as possible?
If, if we did move it a little further towards Hana, you know, we would be dealing with topography. But I believe we'd only be adding about forty feet to the distance from the cemetery. And then the, the ADA parking stalls would still be within that, that hundred twelve distance roughly. So I don't think it makes a substantial difference, but it would add a couple, um, like forty feet.
But if you did that, you would be into the drainage gully and you'd have to do fill and things like that, is that the?
Not into the gully necessarily, but definitely the topography does start to slope down towards the drainage gully, yes.
Yeah, and then when you're closer to a gully, you start to get other issues coming into play.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other further questions from the Commission? Uh, Commissioner Hipolito?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, this question for Ms. Rivera. In my discussion with, uh, Mr. Carpenter, I asked him some questions about overlay and how the design would look with the new treatment system. How much time would it take for you all to provide more information for us to really put meat to the bones in looking at this propose, uh, or the revised propose?
Right, so again, our role is with the SMA permit and, uh, at MH we're not doing the design. Um, I would defer to, um, to Mr. Tanaka about the design process, but my understanding is that, um, you know, it, it would be a significant addition to the design. Um, I, I don't know exactly how long the design would take, but it wouldn't be something where we come back to you next month likely, um, with a design. Um, I don't know if that answers your question or if you have any further questions for Mr. Tanaka?
Um, I would like for Mr. Tanaka to answer my question.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioner Hipolito. Uh, my name is Kirk Tanaka with Tanaka Engineers and we're the civil engineering consultants on this project. Um, based on, based on the proposed condition, um, we're looking at potentially adding, um, some facility to the, uh, approved design. So that being the case, um, we're gonna have to get a sanitary engineering sub consultant uh, to, to look at, to look at the, the design and, and appropriately, um, recommend and potentially design the addition to the system. On, on top of that, once that's all complete, we're gonna have to go back to the Department of Health to get their approval on, on this new system. So they're gonna, they're gonna have to go back and, um, reevaluate what we've done, um, add into our system that they already approved. Uh, I would anticipate that, that process, we, we don't even have a, a sanitary engineer on board yet because it was, it was based on the outcome of this, this hearing. So I would anticipate that the, the timetable for the redesign and the approval from the Department of Health would be on the order of six months. I'm, 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 that, that would be my best guess.
So, um, Mr. Tanaka, based on previous testimony of Mr. Carpenter, they do have this system at Hana correctly?
Correct. From, from what I understand, they have the constructed wetland system at Hana. Um, uh, so it's, so it's, it's a very similar system except with the, except with the addition of the constructed wetland. Um, and so, oh, and, and also, I also understand that they have redundant, uh, leach fields, so, um, yeah, I guess it is similar minus the constructed wetland.
So some of that technology is already acquired and experienced, correct?
Um, yes, yes, I believe so, but, um, the, um, the system would have to be designed, um, individually, yeah? It's not something that, um, we can take the plans from Hana and, and drop it into, just drop it into our, um, our, our Wai Napa Napa Park, yeah?
Correct, Mr. Tanaka, thank you, thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from the Commission? Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. I think I heard mention Jacob Freeman might be available as a resource? No?
Previous project, I think that was previous project.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, never mind, thank you, Chair.
Um, okay, Commissioners, we've heard the staff recommendation. Um, we can entertain, uh, motion? Approve, approve with conditions, defer, deny? Uh, Vice Chair Thompson?
Thanks, Cheryl, propose a motion to approve it with the existing conditions.
Um, what about the condition proposed by the applicant?
To add the, um, field, yes.
Okay.
To add that.
Okay, so the conditions within the Department's staff report with the addition one, the additional condition proposed by the applicant?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
Do you want me to repeat that, um?
Sure, yeah, thank you, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, subject to availability of additional funding, the applicant shall implement a bioreactor pre-treatment unit or aerobic pre-treatment unit for the proposed comfort station as determined to be feasible by a sanitary engineer and as permissible by the State Department of Health.
Right, what I was gonna say.
Okay, um, all right, so that was confirmed by, uh, Vice Chair Thompson who made the motion. Do we have a second?
I have a question on the wording. Um, could, could, um, staff, uh, repeat, uh, the first sentence on, on this, uh, on the new condition?
Can you put it, can you share screen?
It's all, uh, Commissioner Hipolito, it's all one big long sentence, so, um, let me shift screen.
Upon, I guess, my question is upon financial, or what is that, um? I have a question regard the financial part, portion.
So, so, I guess, um, the applicant can answer that, the question? This, this is their amendment? Or condition, excuse me?
Sure, um, Alan, are you able to comment the situation with the funding?
Yes, thank you. So obviously, we can't pay someone to design something if we don't have the money, right? So we are committing to getting this done, whether it's part of this construction period right now, or if it has to be, leave room for it and we get the funding and, and put it in later. But I think, so we, this money is already allocated and spent. We got extra money specifically for Wai Napa Napa in the last budget to the tune of a million, so we should be able to apply those funds and afford it. It's, it's all about timing. I would, I, I'm, I'm promising you guys that we're gonna follow through on this condition, but I'm not going to risk the two point nine million dollars if for some reason we can't get just this one aspect in now, if that makes sense. So my intent is to get it designed and all constructed, all aspects, all one time. Is that clarified?
Yeah.
I'm, um, yes, I'm looking, I, I just, that word, subject to availability. Um, Mr. Carpenter, I believe, I believe you. But when it comes to this kind of situation, subject to funding, I would like to see this and confirm that this will happen. Um.
I don't have the money in my pocket, but the money's in our budget, right?
Yeah, I, yes, I understand, I understand the complexities. I do work for the state and I do go for CIP funding, so I know, I know everything about trying to get monies to do work.
Right.
So I still, um, having, uh, how it's worded, subject to availability of funding, um. If we take that out and just say applicant shall implement, whatever behinds that, I'm fine with that, it's just subject to availability of additional funding. I really feel that this needs to happen. I honestly feel this needs to happen, so.
Would, would it, would it, um, how about if it said, um, upon acquisition of additional funding, the applicant shall? That, that makes it a foregone conclusion, conclusion, right? Um.
So what I'm hearing is that all of this would happen before blessing and movement of Dirk would happen?
I, I, I can't promise that, I have to defer to my engineers about how the contract works, um. Um, if I have any say in it, that answer is yes. But I'm not gonna, if, if for some reason that money's like delayed by a year, but our funds are gonna lapse, I'm not gonna let the $2.9 million walk away. It would be irresponsible of me to do so. Um, what we're doing is committing to getting the funding as soon as possible and implementing this. The design will come, will come first.
Yeah. Um, Chair, you're pretty good with wordsmithing. Is there any way you can assist?
Um, yeah, I guess my question is, you know, similar to the suggestion you had Commissioner Hippolito, is if we just take out that first clause and then the applicant shall, and maybe the time, we can put in a time period at the end? But to me, this would like take care of the funding question. Like, you're, you're not gonna do this until you have funding, but you're gonna do it at some point.
Uh, yes, and, you know, I can't control whether the governor line item vetoes are $1 million for Wainapa Napa. I think there's a 1% chance, or less than 1% chance of something like that happening. But as you say, Commissioner, it's the state. I can't, I can't commit to, to building something I don't have money for.
That's correct. I'm good with that, Chair.
As, um, the way it's written now, right now on the screen?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I guess, Mr. Carpenter, does this sit okay with you?
We can, we can live with it.
Okay. Um, I do understand Commissioner Hippolito's concerns, you know, like if everybody moves on and somebody else is looking at this down the line, they might read that as like, oh, well, we didn't get funding, so we don't have to do this. But I, I, I appreciate you, Mr. Carpenter, you know, wanting to do better and saying, you know, this is your almost personal endeavor to make sure things are done better in the future despite whatever the minimum standards might be, so thank you.
Thank you, we're trying.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, so Commissioner Kialoha?
I, um, is it still appropriate to ask a question? Cause I'm really struggling with this one.
Okay, so one second, I think, uh, just, just point of order here. So we do have a motion on the floor from Vice Chair Thompson. We should have a second to that, and then let us go into everything else. So Commissioner Hippolito?
I second.
Okay, so second, and are you okay as I move on with the change to the, um, applicant's condition? Okay, um, so yes, so we have a motion in a second with the condition as we have it now revised. Um, so Commissioner Kialoha, go ahead.
Um, yeah, Mr. Carpenter, I apologize for not asking this earlier. Um, but the question just popped into my mind. I'm just, my biggest cons- I have a couple of concerns, but I really am concerned about the nitrogen getting into the coastal water. Like, it's just so close to the ocean there. So, how, what, like, what is the percentage of nitrogen that these systems remove? The bioreactor versus... Oh, what is it called? The ni- the other one?
Aer- aerobic treatment?
Yeah. What is the reduction efficiency of these nutrients?
As, as I said, I'm-
Yeah, go ahead.
I am not, I am not an engineer. I am not a sanitary engineer, though apparently I play one on TV. The, um, I can't give you that exact answer. In, in my head, anecdotally, I've heard something like 70% better, right, for aerobic treatment unit. I could be way off. I, I, I don't wanna give a definitive answer because it's not my area of expertise. But do we have someone here? Kirk, can you apply on that?
Hi, everybody. Again, um, Commissioner Kialoha. Um, no, I, I cannot. I'm sorry, can't. Um, that's why we need a sanitary engineer as a sub consultant to do the design that is approvable by the Department of Health. I don't have those, um, quantitative numbers.
Okay. But the purpose of this aerobic reunit and, and unit and bioreactor is to remove the weight, like, the pollutants, right? Like, it's, they should, that's what they're designed to do, right?
It, it was explained to me that, um, this additional treatment, um, reduces the nutrients that, that is, uh, included in the effluent at the leach field stage. That, that's, that's what was explained to me.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I went onto the Fuji Clean USA system, which is the one that we are using at Hyena, not yet installed, and it says, "Produces a consistent effluent quality with a pollutant removal ratio of around 95%." That's from somebody's website. That's from a supplier that we are using for a system that is to be installed. And just, that's all I got for you.
Thank you.
Uh, further deliberation? Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, there was, uh, the first slide on the presentation, um, you're taking out Falskamani trees and putting in grass? Correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We just want the root intrusion into the, um, the system.
I was wondering if you could include native plants there in addition to grass?
Or native ground cover?
Or native ground, something?
Um, I think it's a good idea. If you want to put that in as a condition, we will, we will follow it.
Okay, can we add that as a condition?
Native ground cover instead of grass over the leach field?
Sure, yes.
I would, uh, to the extent feasible, right? So I don't know what the, um, I don't wanna do anything that's going to contaminate the system, right? But, um, so like trees versus shrubs versus grass, all sort of different things. Again, not my area of expertise, but just like with better treatment of wastewater, we should be doing more, um, more uses of native plants, though they do not have as good a survivability rate, I know that. Larry wants to opine. Thank you.
What, what, um, what kind of native grass would you like? Akiaki or Pohuiui? I know those do good in Dune Systems along the shoreline, but, um, the ground is kind of hard up there, so would you have any suggestions of what, what you'd recommend?
Um, I would say, yeah, ground cover, low lying ground cover, maybe. I'm not sure what else is in the area, but something like, um, Nehe or, um, maybe like Beach Akia, the small, the low lying one, Naiopapa, um, the Barf Naupaka, the Naupaka Papa. I'm just thinking low lying, tiny things, Pa'ul Hiiaka, maybe?
Sorry.
Um, there's the Mount O'akiaki. I think there's another kind of, it's another like sedge sort of grass.
Yeah, Pa'ul Hiiaka sounds good. Um, could we just leave it unspecified, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To be determined by a, by a botanist and, you know, something-
Just some suggestions, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. No, appreciate it. But yeah, we can leave it open to just native ground cover and you can figure out what works best for that substrate and things like that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Steph, did you catch that?
Uh, can you repeat?
Um, that, uh, native ground, well, we could say to the extent practicable or to the extent feasible, or just say, "Native ground cover shall be used in place of grass for, um, vegetating the leach field."
Well, I'm not against, um, impacting another area if they wanted grass here, you know what I mean? Um, just replace that amount of square footage with native plants in another area would be, I would be commendable because you have a big park there, so. Um, if you're removing non-native species and you need to put grass because that makes sense for the access and egress of people, I would be okay with putting that same square footage of native plants on the property somewhere else that would make sense. Then you could put trees or whatever you'd like.
This is two different conditions, maybe one for the leach field and one for landscaping?
I, I'm not sure. I'm hesitant to include it over the leach field because there's science behind the plants and absorption of leach aid, and all of that I don't wanna touch. But I do see that you guys did, you are doing some work to remove non-native species, and it would be great to put in native species, um... There.
Is the leach field open for people walking on?
Uh, Chair, Chair, Chair there, um, if I may?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, the, the, the leach field, we en- we envision the leach field as removal of the, the trees and, um, planting, uh, grass, whether it be native or non-native. Um, and the primary purpose of the planting over it is erosion control. So, um, yeah, obviously, we're not gonna leave it bare, bare soil. And we don't typically wanna replant the trees because we don't want, uh, root intrusion. So, um, you know, it's not, it's not meant... Okay, I'm sorry, long story short, it'd, it'd be a, it'd be an open area, um, as, as, as typically most leach fields, whether it be in a public or private setting, is.
Um, maybe to that condition, can we put or the um, equal amount of square footage of um, non-native species that were removed, be replaced in natives? Does that make sense? Because I just, like, maybe grass makes sense on top of the leach field. Um, but... So in that case, you could put native plants in the perimeter or wherever makes sense in whatever capacity you are able to.
Yeah, we can live with that, sounds appropriate.
Or some mix of that, I don't know, and/or? Um... Hippolito's raising his hand.
Uh, Commissioner Hippolito?
Uh, thank you, Chair. On item 13, at the end of natives, could we put plantings, add plantings?
Native plants.
Native plants or plantings, yes, versus just with natives.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, or the equal amount of square footage removed? Or something like that? Because it needs to be specific to what part was taken out and that we need to be replaced. Or does that just make sense?
Um, well, I guess, a question to, I think, well, the applicant. Um, the Falskamani trees that are being removed, are they being removed like just from the leach field area? Are they being removed like where the comfort station is going to go?
Uh, Chair, Chair there, uh, we're, we're proposing to only remove the trees in the affected leach field area. Um, we're not proposing to remove trees anywhere else. Well, I take that back. Um, I think the one, we'll, we'll have to clear out the area, um, that the comfort station sits on. Um, but we did clear that out, and I didn't see any real trees there. Uh, Larry Staff did anyway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the area where non-native, well, just to Commissioner Lindsay, the area where the non-native species are being removed is the leach field. So you would...
Yeah, I guess that's fine. Or the equal amount of square footage? Yeah, that's correct. Makes sense, right?
Um, I guess I have a question to the applicant and a question to the department. To the applicant, is this acceptable and the department, is this enforceable?
It, it's acceptable to us.
What do you think, Colette, is that?
Um, I mean, I guess it would have to be like quantitative in order for it to be enforceable, yeah, like, we're removing eight Kamani trees and we will replace it with this.
Mm-hmm.
Understanding, of course, that the bounds are, are the leach field, right? But I guess it would have to be real specific, um, enforcement, wouldn't it? Yeah, this would be tough.
Um, I wonder if we could reword it to say all areas, uh, that are... Sorry, my eyesight's not that good. Essentially, every, everywhere where existing vegetation is removed has to be replaced with native, something along those lines. I think that would be a little easier for us to enforce.
Okay, um, okay, so...
Uh, Colette, can you put a period after leach field? Um, and then maybe something along the lines of "Any areas where landscaping or vegetation is removed shall be replaced with native..."
Species?
Species.
Um...
Would that work, or?
Commissioner Lindsay?
The, well, I was just thinking it would be possibly hard to cover, just replace the leach field. I mean, just replace the leach field with something other than the grass that exists probably there or nearby. Um, so I was providing the applicant with an alternate of possibly like landscaping an edge, maybe putting a hedge on the side or something of that nature. Because they're removing, yeah, to increase the native plants.
Okay. Um, I would, I guess for the applicant, you know, you're hearing this conversation, I would ask for your input on the way it's written now, if that's doable.
Chair there, may I ask a question?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Tanaka.
Um, this discussion, does this include the square footage that the comfort station will occupy? Or is it just the leach field area? For, or replacement? Because, well, I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask that question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Lindsay?
The intention was everywhere where you removed, you, you put back equal amount. So if you're removing any plants, then you'd put back plants somewhere.
Okay, inclusive of the comfort station, obviously, then, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Tanaka, with the way these are written, is that uh, practicable for you?
All right, I, I'm sorry, I think that's a better question for us, for the state.
That's good.
Although, um, although we may need landscape... landscape architectural services.
We'll, we'll, we'll comply with this, um, and I appreciate the sentiment, it is something we should be doing anyway, just like better treatment of our, of our septic systems. Um, you know, I know there's actually some open areas that had invasive plants around, um, fronting the cabins that, that were um, that if we put native plantings there, it might, um, enhance the view shed for others, there are places within the park that we can um, enhance if it doesn't work for the leach field and it's, we'll, we'll make it work, whether we do it as a you know, a paid part of this project or as a small side project that we can just procure on its own.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Sure, and we'll invite you all to come see it when it's all planted.
Yes, yes. That'd be great, I know it, there's the, our DJ is getting really bad around the area. Um, okay, so friendly amendment by Commissioner Lindsay to add this?
Yes, friendly amendment.
Okay, is there a second to this amendment? I think I saw Commissioner DeCos raise his hand first.
Sorry Chair, I've been raising it for a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Can we just clar- can I get clarification on twelve?
Um, yeah, let's take, well, hold on, let's take care of, um, Commissioner Lindsay's amendment first, is there a second for her friendly amendment? Commissioner Hippolyto?
Second.
Okay, um, all right, any discussion on this, I think we've talked about this pretty thoroughly, but just to make sure, is there any discussion on addition of condition thirteen and fourteen on the screen?
No further discussion, Chair.
Um, okay, I think we can call for the vote on the friendly amendment to add conditions thirteen and fourteen.
Thank you Chair. Uh, skipping Commissioner Ward, uh, Commissioner Kailoha.
Aye.
Commissioner DeCos?
Aight.
Commissioner Hippolyto?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair there?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner DeCos, onto you.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification, so the goal of twelve was to prevent, um, high nutrient water from leak, from getting into the coastal waters. So I see aerobic pretreatment units, I know ATUs are pretty sure they don't necessarily remove nutrients. However, there was mention of the Fuji, Fuji Clean that came up. I know this is kind of after the fact, I know they do have an NSF certified, we could call it a bioreactor. Um, that would, I think, maybe that you're correct, in the ninety-five percent removal of nitrates. So I see that meeting that objective, I don't think the aerobic does, we had a, an ATU applicant, I think the county at some meetings ago, they, they confirmed that there was no nitrogen removal from their system. So I guess would there be, and, and I didn't understand the, the money, so this the way it's worded, as determined to be feasible by a sanitary engineer, so a sanitary engineer could say that a Fuji Clean is not feasible and therefore you can go ahead without, maybe can clarify the funding? And if you would be okay with accepting the Fuji Clean NF, NSF two forty-five system doing the pretreatment?
So I think that's going to be, um, a question for Alan. Um, my understanding is that the aerobic pretreatment, um, does reduce nutrients and, um, results in about an eighty percent reduction in nitrogen, but I'll defer to Alan to talk about the, the options and the funding.
Right, I think it, it seems like we put this condition in, obviously, to, um, help us help you help us get this passed and, um, we are, we have a county, we have an SMA from the county of Kauai, we have approval from the Department of Health for a Fuji Clean system at Hana, so that is virtually a guarantee if you want to specify that system. Um, again, that was what was recommended by our sanitary engineer for that specific project. Um, I think, I I'm assuming that that is a very likely outcome, that we will use the same system that, you know, we had somebody engineer for us on, on another project. I, I think there is value in leaving it open just in case. Um, I don't think, I think we have, you know, spent enough time getting to know each other here that I, I, I hope you can trust us to do what's best for removing the, the nutrients from this before we put the water into the ground, but if you want to specify a Fuji Clean system, because we've already gotten it approved in other, in another place, I see no reason why we couldn't just get that done right now.
I guess I'm, I'm more concerned with the NSF two forty-five, which that's the, that's the criteria, certification criteria for nitrogen removal. So if that's met, I think all the concerns for the, the nitrate, which Hannah, Hana is struggling with, and, and I think we had a a new letter from the Hawaii, uh, the Hana Community Advisory Committee restating that concern for, so maybe just mentioning that a system that meets NSF two forty-five would be implemented, would be sufficient to give you the flexibility.
Okay, I'm sure we can live with that.
Yeah, Staff, can we add that in? Um, uh, let's see, a bioreactor pretreatment unit or aerobic pretreatment unit for the proposed conversation that meets NSF? What was it, two forty-five?
I, I think you can just remove a lot of that, a, a pretreatment system that meets NSF. So pretreatment meaning before it hits the leach field. It will provide NSF two forty-five level water quality.
And, what are you adding, level two forty-five?
Show them, a pretreatment system that meets NSF two forty-five water quality standards.
Okay, and then, yeah, at the beginning, you can say implement, uh, pretreatment.
Take out bioreactor?
Yeah, so, um, uh.
Get aerobic. Just implement a pretreatment system that meets.
Yes, I think how it is now, right?
Yeah, and I would defer to the applicant and engineer if that makes sense.
So as the applicant has noted, they do not have a sanitary engineer that's evaluated the system yet. Um, so in order to confirm that the standard could be met, um, will, you know, require a consultation with a sanitary engineer, and for that reason, um, we would propose perhaps not having a reference to NSF two forty-five water quality because we are not able at this time with our level of design to confirm that, but I, my understanding is that, um, you know, looking at the standard, it appears to remove, um, at, at, at least fifty percent of nitrogen and any system that, that the applicant would be considering under this condition, whether it's a, an aerobic pretreatment unit or a bioreact, it's going to, it's going to meet the fifty percent, it's going to be, um, you know, in line with these standards, but I would hesitate to including specific language.
Okay, so you'd like it best, it would be most practicable for you for, as it's written now?
Yes, that would be our request, um, simply because at, at this time, we don't have a sanitary engineer who can confirm that this, the language with the NSF standard would be feasible.
Okay.
Most likely is, but we cannot say that right now.
Okay, um, but whether it's a bioreactor pretreatment unit or aerobic pretreatment unit, it will automatically achieve a certain standard of cleanliness.
That's my understanding, and Alan, I think you have your hand up to address this as well, so I'll let you, since you're the engineer discussing, I'll let you speak.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you, um, I, my only concern, and, and thank you for bringing that up, the, what I'm looking at, I'm just, I'm, I'm freaking out because I'm doing my own research, but, um, it appears that the, the NSF two forty-five applies to residential systems. It's a standard for residential systems, so if it does not apply to a commercial or large capacity system, that would, we would not be able to comply, so just what I, when I'm looking up online, I only see references of NSF two, two forty-five to residential septic systems, and I don't want to commit to putting something in that's obviously hundred times too small.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I, I'm learning to, and I thought that was a ninety percent nitrogen removal, so I'm, I'm willing to take that out as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we are good, everybody is good with condition twelve at is, as it is currently written on our screen. Okay, wonderful. Um, any further deliberation? Commissioner Hippolyto?
Thank you Chair. Um, earlier conversations with, uh, Mr. Carpenter, that he mentioned that he would not oppose, and I guess we need to he needs to also consult with Mr. Pacheco at the maintenance shops, that's a potential of installing, uh, composting products. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, if you can reconfirm, is that something that the state would consider doing at the maintenance shops?
Sir, and, um, I think the maintenance shop already has one, but it, I, what I tried to convey is that I fully agree with the notion that we need to do better and that a compo, and also secondarily that the composting systems based on our experience in parks are best applied to smaller capacity areas, and so what I said was, we should be looking at potentially adding a composter for staff use at the new entry, along the new entry road, that seems like a logical place to not build the system so that the small number of staff and the occasional person entering the park who has an emergency could use it. Um, and there are other places, and I use the example of, um, Waduwa Valley Lookout, which is one of the three waysides that has no conversation along the Hana Highway, could be another potential location. Um, I would prefer we don't tie that to this project because this project has a specific funding and scope um, that complicates things, um, it's just my, my promise to you that we will consider alternative systems in the future in locations that are, that we deem appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter, I, I agree also, it's, uh, we'll cover it when that time comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Vice Chair?
I just want to note, it is sorely needed and right now people are peeing in the bushes, so.
Or not in the bushes, yes.
So it's a problem.
Yes, yes. Um, okay, I think we have thoroughly discussed this item. Um, and again, thank you, Mr. Carpenter, for being so supportive and for, um, again, appreciate your promise of doing better across all state parks. Very much. Hmm, uh, Mr. Diaz, we can call for the vote.
Thank you Chair, uh, motion is to approve the SMA permit subject to fourteen conditions, three of which were added by the commission today. Um, let's start with, uh, Commissioner Kailoha.
No.
Commissioner DeCos?
No.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Commissioner Hippolyto?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair there?
I vote with the majority, aye. That gives us
Four.
Four ayes. Okay, motion did not carry. Um, we need to arrive at a new motion. Um, may I ask Commissioner Kailoha? Do you have additional concerns about this, if you would like to discuss?
Yeah, I think I just, um, I'm just very unsure about, and it sounds like the county and the engineer is as well about the effectiveness of, of the options in removing pollutants and given the close proximity of the wastewater system to the ocean. Um, and I'm not a geologist, but this is like cliff with porous rock, there's only one way for water to go. Um, and this small community relies on subsistence fishing, so I just I wish I better understood wastewater systems, but I'm just not convinced that this system, this proposed system is gonna remove nitrogen um, and prevent it from getting into the ocean, and I've seen nutrients destroy reefs. Um, so I don't know how to amend this to like, uh, alleviate that concern.
Um, would you consider like amending that, um, pretreatment unit condition to require a certain standard?
Yeah, like I, that's what I'm, I was thinking in my head, I don't, if we can say X percent of you know, nutrient reduction when Commissioner DeCos proposed NSF two forty-five, I was like, oh no, fifty percent reduction, I think that's worse than what we were just talking about, but I feel like if we can say a larger nutrient reduction, that would be a step in the right direction, um, but I don't know because the county is unsure about the nutrient reduction efficiencies of these systems, I'm not quite sure that we're there yet.
Um, so I guess would it work to say that the, like, within that condition number twelve that we were discussing, to add in something that says, you know, that pretreatment must achieve a certain percentage of nutrient reduction?
Yeah, but because I'm not a wastewater engineer, I don't know what like these systems can remove. Do you know what I mean, I don't, maybe Kirk could jump in, or we could say something like, you know, to include the maximum amount of nutrient reduction, like, that we could, that you would be going with a system that's gonna be the most effective at removing nitrogen or, or, you know?
Chair, Chair there, may I address?
Yes, it's an Alka, yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, hi, again, Commissioner Kailoha. Um, I did do, we, pursuant to our previous hearings, we did do some consultation with a sanitary engineer uh, to, to partially come up with the condition that we had proposed. Um, unfortunately, um, you know, I, I, I we, we didn't get into the, the nuts and bolts of, um, you know, the, the percentage of nutrient reduction um, that these treatment, additional treatments offer. It's certainly something that we can, uh, discuss in more detail with, um, a sanitary engineer. Um, if, if that's what, if that's what would make you, um, more confident in, in your, in your, in your position. Um, uh, uh, one more thing that I wanted to, um, potentially, or possibly remind the commission that, um, by, by the addition of this, um, second comfort station, uh, which is further away from the ocean than the existing one, we are not, we're not, um, we are not increasing the, the, the amount of we are not, we're not, we are not increasing the, the amount of effluent that, that we are discharging, yeah? We anticipate that half of the, half of the park users will use the existing comfort station. And we're expecting that the other half will use this new one. So potentially, we're not adding any, any, you know, more effluent. And in fact, if, if half, if what we assume is true, then the half that use this new comfort station, their effluent will be of, you know, better effluent than, than the one that, you know, the existing conversation users are, you know, are deploying. So those are my comments anyway. And I'm happy to answer any more questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sanaka.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kialoha, does this give you food for thought?
Can we, I just don't want to end up at Wainapa Napa in 10 years and see like, you know, some unanticipated issue and know that I had anything to do with that. I guess that's where I was thinking, what, what does this look like in 10 years? But can we say in 12 that something about, like, something about considering, but a stronger word than considering, the solution with maximum nutrient reduction efficiency?
I think maybe this could add to like the first part of the, like the end of the first clause of the first sentence. Unit for the proposed comfort station that maximizes nutrient load in the effluent? Yes, I'm sorry, reduction. Thank you. That maximizes nutrient reduction in effluent. And I think effluent starts with an E. It's a homonym, homonym.
There, there, there.
Yes. To the applicant, does this still work for you?
Yes, that'll, that'll work for us. That is our intent. And I wish we could give, I mean, I'd almost be willing to throw out a number, you know, between 50 and 75%. I think we absolutely can get. I think most of them that we would consider would be between 80 and 95%, but I would hate to, I would hate to make it an impossible thing to comply with.
I guess by comparison, what does a, I don't know, DOH standard result in?
DOH standard is, it just goes, right? I mean, you don't have to have pre-treatment.
Okay.
That, what we have approved from DOH right now is no pre-treatment. So it's, it's 100%. We're going to reduce that significantly.
Thank you. Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, DOH has no levels, although we know from the injection well case that it's, it's now connecting to marine waters. And so they have to, those connections make the treatment levels much, much more stringent. But that's a side note. I guess I failed in the last meeting to mention. When I mentioned the bioreactor as an option, I thought I mentioned Ridge to Reefs. That's one that's being implemented all throughout, even in Hana, that DOH has approved. They have all the data that reduces to 90%. So there's, there are systems out there. I wish maybe I would have been more clear. So that, that would have been a five-minute discussion with those people that have that. They would have handed over the data. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Does this condition as it's written work for you? Commissioner Dicos?
No.
Okay, what would you suggest?
Overall, I'm, I'm way off. I'm nowhere close. I mean, we're talking a $2.0 million, $2.9 million system when we heard a solution that may not include the foundation for half million that would eliminate all black water, have very minimal maintenance. I have trouble swallowing the 2.9, even though we don't want to lose that procured funding. And the fact that it's, this is the third time around. We knew that nutrients was at the top of the list for the Hana community. And we're just discussing it on the bottom of the night. So I'm very far away from supporting the motion on the floor.
Okay, just a point of clarification. They did say that 2.9 is not entirely for the comfort station itself because there are other improvements, you know, like the whole entire roadway improvements, I believe, are also wrapped up in that $2.9 million cost. So just, you know, making sure you're aware that it's not a $2.9 million comfort station.
Right. And I, and I think I asked for the breakdown, but I wasn't provided. I recognize that, yes.
Okay. But Commissioner Kialoha, this will fly with you? Okay. I think we would need a new motion for approval with new, newly revised conditions. From someone.
Why, thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the updated conditions. Thanks.
Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Hippolito. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, it needs to get better, not worse. And, you know, I respect everybody's opinion. You should step forward with knowledge, wisdom, or solutions. Other than that, it's waste our time.
Discussion from the second?
Thank you, Chair. No discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the other commissioners? Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. And I do, I agree that, you know, we need to be making decisions based on factual evidence, information, reliable information. So that's what I try to base my decision on. I've been on the commission two years, hoping we can move the needle. The environment has taken a huge hit from the developed world. And I was hoping, you know, we've had many discussions. We're at the very end. They say, well, we'll try to do better next time. And it kind of slips in as a condition, but nothing really changed. So now in two years in, this is a national, this is a state park. If there was low hanging fruit to sort of achieve this in Hana, this was the project. So it's a little frustrating for me that we didn't get further along here to sort of move the needle. We did get a little, I shouldn't say that, we did get a little further along. But we got a long way to go, and I hope that we get there at some point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dicos. Anything else from other commissioners? Okay, to your point, Commissioner Dicos, I hope this is a step in the right direction. Although it's not a giant step, it sounds like we are getting far more treatment than we have currently. And we are going well beyond DOH standards. And we do have it on the record from Mr. Carpenter, his personal promise that future state parks will have better systems. So hopefully, you know, we've changed the trajectory at least somewhat. Okay, so with this, we can call for another vote.
Thank you, Chair. Motion on the floor is to approve this project subject to 14 conditions, three of which were added by the commission and amended during this meeting. Commissioner Kialoha?
Aye.
Commissioner Dicos?
No.
Commissioner Hippolito?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair there.
And I vote with the majority, aye. That is five votes in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, moving along in our agenda, we have item E1, the director's report.
Thank you, Chair. Under director's report, this item, there's no decision that you folks have to make. It's essentially for notification purposes. And that is Director Kate Blystone transmitting the following application to the commission. And it's basically Ina Pacific LLC requesting the transfer of permit holder from Ensign Peak Investments LLC to Ina Pacific LLC for a special management area use permit, plan development steps one and two for the Kapalua Site 6-0 workforce housing project in Kapalua. And this, this was already approved by the department. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this item? Anyone sign up to testify? Okay. Any questions from the commission? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Next item is?
Chair, I have a, I had a question, Chair.
Oh, sorry, sorry for missing you. Go ahead, Commissioner Hippolito.
On item E1, what location is this referring to? It says, there's a TMK, but could you tell me?
Okay, I will have the applicant's representative, Sandy DuVichelle, come to answer questions, if you don't mind.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair, Commission. Sandy DuVichelle, Lehuah Builders and part of Ina Lani Pacific. This is the Pilolo Place, which is right up off of the lower road. We've already developed half the project. This is just the other half of the, of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy. Next item is the SMA minor report from August 19th to October 1st.
Questions, Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry to be the pain in the butt today. I just have one question for one SMA exemption. This is the Kali Aloha exemption for the sprawling repairs. The question, an exemption requires no, not that it doesn't adversely impact public access or coastal ecosystems. This is a property very similar to other properties on West Maui with a serious encroachment. There was a seawall built there in 1970s. They've had emergency permits and sinkhole repairs since ongoing, which clearly is not a fixed shoreline. That's water topples over the top of that seawall, undermines it, ends the sinkhole. So you have, and I've often wondered why we're losing all our beaches when the laws protect the public trust. And I think these are examples of, of why that happens. They keep being able to continue to repair or add.
Chair, Chair, this is Michael Hopper. If there's, again, if there's some questions right to the, to the department on this, that's fine. If we need to agendize this as a separate item or something, that's fine. But I, I'm not, I'm just concerned for sunshine law purposes, you know, for this, that we, that if there's some questions on that, that's fine. But, you know, the purpose of the list isn't to have a separate agendized item with each one of these. It's to follow up on, on, you know, if you've got questions, that's fine. But, you know, I, I just have sunshine law concerns with, with this list. And, and so I'd like to just go forward with, if there's questions on this item, that, that's okay. But if you've got problems with the exemption, I mean, yeah, that's subject to appeal. A group can file an appeal or something like that. But I just want to put out the caution there for, for this.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper. Commissioner Dicos?
Fair enough. Yeah, so my questions are, how is this considered not adversely impacting the shoreline? How is this not considered an unfixed shoreline? How does this not require certified shoreline, shoreline certification? Those are three questions.
So Candace Dockerson, environmental planning supervisor, this is concrete repairs to the existing columns at the condominium. This is not for sinkholes or, or the seawall.
And the, the columns that are supporting?
The condominium complex?
Condominium. And why are they compromised?
I do not, it does not state, but it is concrete repairs to the existing condominium, existing columns at the condominium. This is not a repair to the seawall.
Right, correct. But it's, it's repairs due to the high wash of the waves?
I would not say that.
Okay. So in your determination, this is not adversely impacting coastal?
To repair, like that people can replace windows in a unit, they can do repairs to their existing columns, they can do repairs to the building. It's not going to adversely impact the environment to do repairs to an existing building.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. While you're here, I do have a question on one of the SMA minors, the Haycraft Dune Park, Haycraft Park Dune Restoration Project, which is great. I am happy to see this happening. My question is, because there's going to be outplanting of different kinds of native plants, and there's some that are already in the area. So I'm curious about the stock for the plants that are going to be outplanted.
So I believe we have Wes Kryle. He was actually out today buying the plants, our C-grant. That's why he was out of the office today. He was buying some of the, I think it was Hohui Hui and Aki Aki grass is what was listed. So by, by stock, you mean like, how much is there available?
I'm, I'm, like, for example, the Akuli Kuli. So in some of the project photos in the application, it shows there's like existing patches of Akuli Kuli on the ground, but there's also Akuli Kuli on the planting list. So my concern is if the outplanted plants are Akuli Kuli from somewhere else on the island, it would be best to replant what is like already here. And so if, yeah.
I, I would not, I mean, not being the applicant, I could not say what plants they're specifically buying. I would hope that our C-grant agents would be taking that into consideration. He's out right now, I guess, purchasing the plants. That's what he's doing today. Yeah. I'm, as not being the applicant, we could not say what he's buying.
Okay. Perhaps I will try and get in touch with him afterwards, just to make sure. Because this is like, you know, like it's within a county park sort of area, but you're like at the interface with Kalia Pond. So ideally, you're using plants that are already from the area to keep the local genetics going and not introducing genetics from some other part of the island.
I'm sure Wes Kryle would love to hear about that. You know, he's great and he's very sensitive.
Yes.
And his, when you go into maps on the SM2, when you click on attachments, they do have the Dune Restoration Plan. And he lists on the bottom, further questions or concerns can be directed to UHC Grant Dune Restoration Specialist Wesley Kryle. And he lists it and email address. So if you want to reach out to him directly, I'm more than happy to hear that.
Chair.
Thank you, Candace. Yes, Mr. Hopper.
Yeah, I, I would, since these are all potentially contested cases at some point, I wouldn't directly contact him. Perhaps he can send a letter to the commission, providing that information to the commission as a whole. But generally, we, we shouldn't have commissioners, you know, discussing directly things on, on projects that potentially could come to the commission. You wouldn't want to have to recuse yourself, so.
Of, of, Council, thank you for that. Do you think it would be more appropriate after the appeal period is closed?
I still would just have, have him send a letter to the commission explaining what plans for use, I don't understand why that would, you know, necessarily create a problem, but I think that's better, so the whole commission knows that, rather than individual commissioners um having those discussions.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner DeGos?
Thank you, just to go back, one last question, um, on a foundation repair, the spalling on the concrete repair, uh, if it's cau-, how do you determine if it's caused by the high wash of the wave or not? Do you need to do an inspection or?
Oh, Candace, you're on mute. Sorry, Ms. Dockerson.
Thank you, for the columns, the columns were not located um in the shoreline setback area, the columns for the building were not located in there.
Okay, uh, so my question specifically, if there's repairs needed on a foundation, columns.
Are you talking about hypothetically?
Sure, we'll call it hypothetically. Um, and so you need to know why those foundations have been compromised and how do you determine whether the high wash of the wave is the reason the compromise, there's been sinkholes on this particular case, but hypothetically if that high wash of the wave is breaching whatever protective measures there are and, and attacking the foundation, how do you determine that and does that mean anything?
Sometimes that would be included in an engineering report?
So unless the applicant stated, uh, we have an eroding um foundation from seawater, then there's no reason to go and investigate or?
I think it would be determined on a case-by-case basis.
Um, Ms. Dockerson, now that we have uh Mr. Ward, has, now we have our new commissioner, are we going to have our, like, you know, SMA shoreline workshop orientation going to happen?
Um, well, I, I, uh, how do I answer this? So I should be moving roles shortly, I think, from this position into a different position and so then we could talk about doing the training overall for all of the commissions. Um, because it's not only SMA and shoreline, but we also need to go over sunshine law and um the HR briefings and you guys are, are probably due for your annual training, so a, a duty that we need to start looking at as well, and that, that would include SMA and shoreline, yes.
Um, so, well, we have that in the next couple of months or so, to, just to, you know, thinking about Commissioner DeGos' ongoing questions about process and such, if we could probably have that orientation sooner rather than later, might save us a bit of time.
We have quite a few items already scheduled for agendas, um, uh, I, I guess I, I need to touch base with probably Danny, um, as well as Kate and see what, and also you, Chair, to see how close you guys are on the South Valley Community Plan, um, and when, you know, because that will then um allow us to have eight-hour meetings again, right, like a full time? Because we do have many agenda items stacking up for you guys, um, for projects as well moving forward. So we, we can have that discussion offline, but yeah.
Okay, just want to put it on the radar, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, any further questions from the commission? Seeing none, I believe we can adjourn this meeting.
Early, yeah. Unless Danny wants to go over what's on your next agenda?
Yeah, I can do that, so the next meeting is on October twenty-second, um, and just to go back to your previous comment, Chair, we will try to schedule training as soon as possible, um, noticing requirements uh require us to notice applicants for projects forty-five days in advance, so that does sort of um, you push us out quite a bit, I think, um, maybe even to the end of the year, so in any case, um, the next meeting, the items that we have are uh a community plan amendment for Oklahoma Village, um, and i- it's a little complex, we'll explain it at that meeting, but this project will essentially lead to them being able to re- rebuild um some of the units that were damaged during the fire. Um, there is a bed and breakfast on Halama Street, um, and then there is the McKenna H two project, which I think was before you a month ago, um, when you folks voted to, to act as a hearings officer, so we're going to do some scheduling for that. Um, and then uh Kahana Sunset Pre-Hearing Conference, so, um, four items for the next meeting, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions on those? Okay, seeing none. Now, I think we can adjourn this meeting, thank you for all the discussion today, everybody, appreciate all of you contributing to our decision-making. So, um, we have our South Miami Community Plan meeting in a little while at three o'clock, so we will see you there, thank you again, ahuiho.